Good evening and welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, August 27, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Mayor Haikala?
I am here. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is the approval of minutes, consideration of City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Special Meeting Minutes, City Council Conference Minutes, and the City Council Swearing In Ceremony Minutes. I need a motion to approve or reject the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. You may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two, a proclamation proclaiming Wednesday, September 11, 2024, is Virtue Center Appreciation Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I will read it. "A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Wednesday, September 11, 2024, is Virtue Center Appreciation Day in the city of Norman. Whereas the Virtue Center located in Norman, Oklahoma, has consistently demonstrated a pro- to enhancing the well-being of our community through its dedicated services, programs, and initiatives; and whereas the Virtue Center has provided invaluable support in areas such as mental health, addiction, recovery, personal development, and offering resources and a safe space for individuals and families in need; and whereas the center's team of professionals and volunteers have worked tirelessly to create positive impact fostering a culture of resilience, hope, empowerment among those they serve; and whereas the Virtue Center efforts align with our city values of compassion, unity, and support for all residents, and their work exemplifies a spirit of community and dedication to the common good; and whereas the contributions of the Virtue Center have only improved the quality of life for many individuals but have strengthened the fabric of our community as a whole. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do proclaim Wednesday, September 11, 2024, is Virtue Center Appreciation Day in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in recognizing the center's exceptional service and unwavering commitment to making a difference in the lives of our residents." I'd like to recognize Amy Singleton, Jan Estani, and Robert Castleberry, if they're here. Oh, come on up.
(APPLAUSE).
You guys can squeeze in a little bit tighter. All right. One, two, three.
Thank you so much for this wonderful acknowledgement of the Virtue Center. We've served the city of Norman for over 50 years, providing help and hope, and we're grateful for the support and the acknowledgement. Thank you so much.[472.03][472.03](APPLAUSE).
Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start with Ward Eight.
Oh, man. Okay. Speaking of Virtue Center, Farm Girl Fair is October 6th, 72nd Tecumseh. All right. October 6th, 72nd Tecumseh, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It is one of the big fundraisers for the Virtue Center. It's an awesome time. Come out, help support the Virtue Center. I'm going to apologize, this is going to be a little lengthy. I've got two things here, but there's a lot. Item number 15 on consent is an acceptance of a grant from the Dickey's Foundation for tactical helmets for our rescue task force on the fire department. These will go along with our vests to offer max protection to teams entering warm zones during mass casualty events. Hopefully, we never have to use them. But we now have, we also have mass casualty bags on all of our frontline engines. Second of all, third of all, our fire marshal, Matt Elliott, has been named Fire Marshal of the Year. Our fire marshal in Protection Division is known as one of the best in the state, so take that, my brother who works for Tulsa Fire Department. You are not as good as we are. On top of that, our Plans Review component is known as the best in the state with the highest marks for customer service and turnaround time. And then lastly, our fire department combat, combat, combat medic team, which is separate from the rescue task force, they've been deployed about 15 times since they've been created. This team is unique in the state as they go into the hot zones with SWAT teams around the metro. And so I just want to give a big shout out to the entire fire department for everything they're doing. They are on the leading edge of innovation and service in the state of Oklahoma, so thank you, Norman Fire Department.[593.12][593.12](APPLAUSE).
Councilmember?
Thank you, and thank you all for being here this evening, and those of you watching at home. The couple of things I have, today, this morning, we opened the Emergency Operations Center and cut the ribbon on a voter-approved project. It will house our Emergency 911 Dispatch Call Center, our Traffic Control Management Center, and our Emergency Management Team, and will allow the city of Norman to continue operating in the event of an emergency, of a natural disaster, or any kind of disaster. It's a hardened facility that can withstand, I don't know what F5 tornado, but an F5 tornado, so the strongest that we know of. And really, it's taken several years to get this project done, but it was a project that had to be done in full and correctly. It couldn't be cut, we couldn't do half of it and then, and then do the rest later. And really, the biggest benefit to it and why I'm most excited about finally getting it finished, and it's on East Robinson, just across from the water treatment plant, if you've been wondering what that building is that's under construction. But our 911 Dispatch Center has been in the basement of the Police Department for several decades, and as Norman has continued to grow and the number of calls for service has grown with it, the basement of the Police Department lacks the ability to expand that workstation for those, for those employees. It's been maxed out for years. We've budgeted positions to hire more dispatchers, but literally can't because we can't fit any more dispatch stations in the basement. The basement obviously has no windows, it doesn't have any direct access to the outside. And this new facility not only does have windows, it can also withstand a, a high winds of 250 miles an hour plus, as they mentioned this morning, but it has an outdoor break area for them, it has a dog run for the, the dog that works in the dispatch center, it has a break room for them to decompress. And as many of you can imagine, being a 911 dispatcher is one of the most, if not most stressful jobs in our emergency response apparatus. And so for those employees to now have a place where they can work out of that's comfortable and helps them do a better job at, you know, guiding us through what may be the most difficult or hardest day of our life potentially. And so I'm very excited for them. It also has the room to more than double the amount of dispatchers that we could have, and so very excited about that. And then the Traffic Control Management Center, when it goes online, it will have the ability to operate the traffic signals throughout the city in real time based off of if there's a crash, if there's an event, if there's heavy traffic for whatever reason on a certain street, they can make the green light last longer, do those types of things in real time, and hopefully help improve traffic flow throughout the city of Norman. So very excited to get that done and appreciative to all the Norman voters that made that possible. Also, again, we don't, none of us need to be reminded, but first home game on Friday, and it's definitely going to be a really busy time, so I would encourage everybody to pay attention when you're out driving and, and be mindful of that since it is on a Friday and we're not used to having, you know, OU play a home game on a Friday, so it's different, a little different for everybody. And so I'm really excited, though, to get the season started and welcome all the new visitors to Norman over the next few months. Also wanted to mention that the solar evaluation, if you're interested in doing that, is part of the Norman Solar Initiative, September 1st is the deadline, and you can go to normansolarinitiative.com to sign up for that. And then also, I've gotten some questions this week about construction on Highway 9. We got a notice today that ODOT is going to be, going to be starting work on the bridges on Highway 9 that cross Bishop Creek between Jenkins and Southeast 12th Avenue, and it's set to begin on 9/3, so September 3rd, and the project term says 425 days, so expect construction to be happening that is not a city project, so please direct your, if you get upset about it, please direct it to ODOT. And then lastly, I just want to thank Ward Seven resident Ashley Durham for her appointment to the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee. That committee oversees the public, the publicly approved public safety sales tax, which is what mostly paid for the Emergency Operations Center that we opened today. So that committee helps oversee how those funds are spent and makes sure that the city is spending those funds as voters expected and what they approved. So thank you, Ashley, for your willingness to serve our city in this way, and that's all I have. Thank you all for being here.
Councilmember?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining tonight at City Council, and hello to everyone at home in Ward Six. I just want to say thank you again to the Virtue Center for the work that you guys do in our community and making up really what is the fabric of support that helps so many people and bring lives up that really need help. So your work is commendable, and I'm really glad that organizations like you exist in Norman. Also, I'll just be brief and remind everybody that Porch Fest is happening this weekend in the Miller Historic District, so if you're looking for something a little lighter to do, it's a very family-friendly and fun event, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
No announcements this week, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Yes. Good evening, Ward Four in the city of Norman. Since we will not have council announcements before September 10th, if you're in the Old Silk Stalking Neighborhood, boundaried by Robinson, Porter, James Garner, and Main Street, there will be an Old Silk Stalking Neighborhood night out from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on, at Trinity Baptist Church. You can also, if you're in this neighborhood, look it up, get the history, get to know some of your neighbors who've already left comments about what they love about their neighborhood. The website you're going to want is sni.normanok.gov/old-silk-stocking-neighborhood. This weekend, on Saturday, August 31st, as was alluded to, at 6:00 p.m., we have a Porch Fest, which is hosted by the historic Miller District, McMichael Music, and 405 Brewing. There will be porta-potties, people who are encouraged to walk, scooter, or bike over from adjacent neighborhoods if they can. I saw a comment online from one of the organizers at Oscillator Press, a downtown print shop, may have made shirts for this event as well. Learn more about which porches will be stages and see the lineup on the Facebook event, Porch Fest 2024. To reiterate what was said before, we are in our final week of the Norman Solar Initiative, and the Cliff Notes for the process, definitely by September 1st, lock in your rate, and you have till the end of the year, if you're a resident, to buy it by December and have it installed to keep that rate. So the first thing you do is send an electric bill, get your solar design customized for you, and have a 15-minute solar consult. Learn more at normansolarinitiative.com. I will say, my family has done it. I posted about the process on my public Facebook account. With the tax credit, the pricing initiative, we are looking at $15,000, and our strategy is to put some money down and get local financing from a credit union. So there are local lenders to help folks who might not have all the money up front to buy it. Last, we have our annual council retreat at the end of this week. I'm taking constituent suggestions. One great one I got from a constituent and occupational therapist in Ward Four was that we should get the AARP's Livable City Designation, which just says that we have set up our community so that people can age in place. If you have a vision for Norman, the best way to let me know by council retreat is wardfour@normanok.gov. And we have a long meeting tonight, so thank you for showing up or tuning in and being engaged.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. In an effort to maximize our time together, I have no announcements. So those of you here with us and watching online, thank you all for being here.
Councilmember?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate Councilmember Grant's comments about our retreat this weekend. This is where we have our annual gathering, where we set our policy objectives and our goal-setting for the upcoming year. So if there are any policy work or any ideas that you want us to explore during that retreat, please send them to myself or your council member up here. As Councilmember Grant alluded to, our emails are wardnumber@normanok.gov. So please send us all your ideas. Every year I get an idea that makes its way to the retreat and somehow gets adopted as a piece of policy, so this really is your opportunity to have your fingerprints on policy, so please don't reach out.
Food foresting.
Food foresting, yes.
I'll, I'll, go, Councilman Hinkle, Porch Fest this weekend, August 31st, should be an amazing time. I will be having a town hall tomorrow afternoon at 5:30 at the Adult Wellness Center, so I'll be discussing the TIF, our shelter. We'd like to talk about this more. Hopefully, we can handle it tonight after hearing everybody, but we'll see about that. There's two items on our consent docket that I'd like to bring up. Number one is to Thunderbird Clubhouse for $50,000. If you do not know what Thunderbird Clubhouse is, it's an amazing organization here that helps individuals with mental health and disabilities. They do job placement, they do job training, they have, they work with the restaurants here that have permanent positions just for their clients. They help with housing, they help with just life skills. An amazing, amazing organization, so I'm very happy to see that. And the second, number 26, is the contract between the city of Norman and Norman Public Schools for the school resource officers that we voted on two years ago and that are slowly getting put into place, which is a good thing, because in the last week, we've had two school lockdowns. We've, I, I talked to Dr. Nick this morning, I had about a 45-minute meeting with him. They had found a firearm at one of the schools, and one of the schools actually had a mentally ill homeless individual come into the front office and start doing a strip dance in front of the office staff. So this shows why it is so important to protect our kids and have these school resource officers. And unfortunately, right now, our elementary schools, their school resource officers are on a rotating basis. Last year, Cleveland County was partnering with us, we had an officer in every school for every minute there was a kid there. Now it is all MPD doing all the work, and they are doing an amazing job. We are blessed to have them there, but it, it takes an officer, it takes five minutes for an emergency or something bad to happen. So we need these officers to be in our school at all times. Dr. Nick said he would be meeting with Rod Cleveland tomorrow at county to try to make sure we have deputies in place, so I know how much all of you guys, like ladies, love writing emails, so I would highly encourage you to write Rod Cleveland and ask him to make, make sure our kids are safe. So if you could do that, I would greatly appreciate it. And just on a positive note, on July 26th, I had an individual in my ward reach out to me. He was in danger of becoming homeless, was suffering from mental health issues, he was an alcoholic, severe depression, suicidal. So I sent an email to staff here, Darrell, Rick, I sent it to Chief Foster, and within 30 minutes, got a call back from Chief Foster, said, "Call up here at the Virtue Center." So I called the Virtue Center. They got me in touch with Red Rock, let's see, yeah, Red Rock, and one other one. They said because of the alcohol issues, they would probably need to do some kind of detox and take him to the emergency room. So, or that's what they said they were going to do. So I'm like, well, let me just go ahead and cut that out of the way, so I took him to the emergency room. They were able to get him into our brand-new facility up here on the Porter Campus. It's run by Ocean Behavioral Services, it's part of Norman, Norman Behavioral Health, an amazing building, amazing facility. He was able to enter there that day, and today I was able to transfer him to Oklahoma City. I picked him up after being there a month to go to 120 to one-year rehab facility up in Eden, run by Catalyst. So there is help available. There are resources available in this town, this is Oklahoma. We care more about our neighbors, we care more about our family than, I'll put this up against any, any state in the Union, because that's what we do for people. And there are the resources available. But just like we saw what was going on at our schools, those issues were caused by vagrants. They were not caused by citizens of Norman, they weren't caused by people who live here and who respect our laws, they were caused by vagrants and transients coming through here. So we're, we're going to be talking about this much more coming up, so that's all I'll say about that. But yeah, if y'all could write Rod Cleveland for me, let's get the SROs in all of our schools, I'd appreciate it. That's all I have.
Mayor has no announcements. All right. Next item is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda of the City Council by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item 3 through Item 35 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place Items 3 through 35 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to place Items 3 through 35 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Does it show you voted? Okay. Well, all votes have been cast, and for some reason on my monitor, it's showing that Councilmember Grant and Councilmember Peacock had not cast a vote, but they had said and they had cast a vote in the positives, so that passes unanimously. Oh, and Councilmember Holman, sorry. I missed that one.
May end of voice voting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Non-consent items. Item number 36, an, an ordinance so as to grant special use for mini warehouse in the C2 General Commercial District for 408, excuse me, 4801 West Main Street. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a representative from the applicant, Mr. Brian Baca? Okay. Are there any questions from council regarding this item that Mr. Baca can answer, needs to answer? Do you have one? Yes, sir.
So just given the location of this, West Main Street and 48th Avenue, near the river, low-flying area, there has been flooding in the Cambridge neighborhood area before. You have a stormwater management plan, I assume. Would you maybe talk about that briefly?
During construction, the stormwater management plan, which is required, we would have, which is generally just taking care of any silt or erosion or any kind of contaminants in the water that would potentially leave the site. Once the project is completed, it'll be restored back to the condition it was before, and then after that, it'll just be natural drainage.
Okay. And just, so everyone knows, this is not a greenfield development, this is an existing storage facility, correct?
Yes, it's an existing storage facility. All of the perimeter of the buildings have been completed, this is an interior building, they're getting rid of open parking and going to all interior climate-controlled storage in a single building.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Montoya?
Yeah, so I was just going to make a comment that I'm very familiar with the storage facility, and so I do recall that that was used as parking for RVs and large boats, so I was just making a comment that I'm very familiar with the project and what it was initially used for, so I'm guessing that it's not used for parking anymore, people aren't parking RVs and boats anymore?
They are.
Okay. But you're just changing it to build more mini storage.
Those people will be displaced. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. That's why.
All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council only, and once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, or anybody, has anybody signed up to speak?
Ben Plummer? Ben Plummer? I think that's him. If you guys could clear the doorway a little bit so he could get in. Oh, wait, you're not, so you're not Ben Plummer? Never mind. Okay. (LAUGHTER). Sorry. Okay. (LAUGHTER). Cynthia Rogers. Cynthia, are you in here?
Oh, she's good.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Okay, that's all, ma'am.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Baca.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hang on, forgot about the ones that signed up in the back. Sherland Dinsel and Evan Dunn.
Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue. I'm in support of this. I'd just like to reiterate again that the value of companion planting might be able to deal with some of those silt issues that were discussed earlier.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council regarding this item? Hearing none. All right. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt. Second.
There's a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 37, a resolution of the city of Norman to protect and preserve Lake Thunderbird watershed, the Canadian River corridor, the city's drinking water supply, and the city's flood hazard areas, acknowledging the Oklahoma Turnpike Authorities Access, Authorities Access Oklahoma Program to construct turnpike facilities in the city of Norman through these critical areas in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to adopt, reject, or amend or postpone the resolution.
Motion to reject.
Motion to?
Reject.
Reject, thank you.
Second.
Is there a second?
Was that Josh reviewed, seconded? Josh?
Motion on the floor is to reject the resolution. You want to have, questions from council? Any comments from council to this? Hearing none. Do we need to do public? Yep.
Okay, I'm going to call out two names at a time so that you know who will follow the next one, and maybe it'll help it move a little faster. We'll start with Michelle Sinclair, and she will be followed by Ben Plummer, if he is here. If not, it will be Kelly Wilson.
I was first, huh? Okay. How's that? Is that pretty good? Okay. Mayor Hakala and members of the council, my name is Michelle Sinclair, and I've lived in Ward 5 for 22 years. If you live in town, all of you, you're only minutes away from our beautiful rural community with its agricultural land and green space and trees and trees and livestock and Lake Thunderbird. Lucky you, because that green space is important to the health of everyone, everywhere. And if you partner with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, you are giving that resource away. Your partnership with the OTA, no matter how you spin it, will result in the destruction of the land, the demolition of hundreds of homes, and the displacement of thousands of Norman residents who built their family home, their dream home, their retirement home, the home where they could age in place, right here. OTA and the city of Norman partners. You call that leadership? I don't call that 21st century leadership, because that other kind of leadership is old and narrow-minded. Narrow-minded because some government bureaucrats or Chamber of Commerce executives and construction industry lobbyists want tomorrow to look like today. Instead, the citizens of Norman want a vision from you that is big and bold, a vision much friendlier than OTA's demolition plan, and it looks like this, number one. Protect and preserve Norman's green space. It's no secret that our rural properties with their old-growth trees and canopies are cooler than pavement. You will not be the only city officials in the country putting a stake in the ground and saying no to somebody else's ridiculous definition of progress. There's a movement afoot. Instead of demolish and displace, let's protect, preserve, and prioritize the homes and prosperity of our citizens and property of our citizens. The threat of OTA's bulldozer is an enormous stress on these families, and it's not too late for you to take a stand and say no now. Number three, protect and preserve the agricultural land that is capable of growing fresh food and raising livestock on that land. Locally sourced food is making a comeback, and one day, we will be grateful that we kept OTA away from that land. And finally, protect and preserve the wildlife that is out there, like the owl that wakes me up at 4:00 in the morning, and the red hawk that swoops in low under the trees, and my neighbor's bees that pollinate the flowers, and the doe.
Honor, protect, and preserve that big and bold plan, and nobody will ever change that Okay, one more time for Ben Plummer. Kelly Wilson. Pamela Charlton will follow Kelly.
Wilson, Ward 6. I just wanted to point out there are a few pieces of inaccurate information in this resolution in its current form. Number five reads, whereas improvements to Oklahoma's interconnected transportation system of interstates, state highways, and local roads must be coordinated to leverage resources, improve safety, and ensure a seamless operation for the benefit of all Locomomans. I first take issue with the word coordinated. We do not need a resolution to coordinate. Staff has already been coordinating with the OTA. I also take issue with the verbiage of "to leverage resources." This suggests to me that we may be on the hook to fund portions of the project, if not at this point, in the future. And then number six, whereas the OTA announced in December 2021 their 15-year long-range plan, they did not announce their plan until February 22nd of 2022. And then I just also wanted to point out that it's come to my attention that there are some people in the community and members of the staff who feel that there are, that our group is a small group, and that we're a small portion of the population in Norman. And I just want you to know that while we may feel small, we're actually very big, and I think you can see that tonight. We have a huge crowd here tonight, and this is just a small portion of the people who would like to be here. But maybe didn't have the means to get here for one reason or another. Maybe they were working, or, I mean, a lot of the, these people live on farms, and they might be still, you know, tending to their farm work before they could come tonight, so they couldn't be here tonight. So anyway, I just wanted you guys to know that there are a lot of people impacted, and you have the ability to continue to speak for us and be our voice. And also, I just wanted to point out that in this resolution, it still talks about the south extension, which, right now, we don't know that there's going to be a south extension. They think there's going to be a south extension, but there might not be. So why would we want to commit to partnering with them or participating with them on something that may never happen? And I just wanted to point out real fast, right now, we have this right here, the East-West Connector. They say they're going to do that. But by partnering with them and continuing this, you're potentially authorizing this, and I don't want to see that happen, because right now, this is the number of people that we have impacted, but we could be looking at two, three, four times this many people that are going to be impacted. So I'd like for you to say no, no partnership with the OTA, not now, and not ever. Thank you.
Following Pamela will be Rob Norman.
Members and Mayor Hakala. My husband and I have been Norman residents here for about 33 years, and we've raised our children here. And this proposed turnpike is supposed to go right through the middle of our house. And that would be very hurtful to us and disruptive, but not just to us, but to so many, because there's been 600-plus families that's going to be impacted by this. I've enjoyed this spot that God gave us, and someday, I will leave Norman, and I'll vacate my home there. And when he calls, I'm going to pass the moon and the Milky Way, and I'm going to be with him, and that's promotion, and I'll welcome it. But when he calls, and not when the OTA calls, I will not recognize the Turnpike Authority. We have been told that we are reminded that we must follow the law, and I agree, and I've always done that and always will, but without question, when manipulation and some intimidation, time-pressure tactics are used, I don't want to yield to that. This lack of transparency and self-serving attitude does not rule the day. This doesn't just affect me and mine, but so many, like I said, three, at least 600 other Norman families, and they're more than rooftops. Every one of them are so valued and precious in the Lord's sight. So this injustice has caused such a compassion in my heart. I've attended OU years back, two of my sons graduated there. Until then, I've never really prayed, not for my city, but now I am. And council, if you don't already, I hope you pray. I hope that we have a great city, and he wants to make it a great city. In turn, we're going to be praying for you, that you make good decisions. If it isn't good for all citizens, it isn't good at all. If we don't honor Norman families and we don't honor God, sadly, he will not honor us. A five-level interchange will not make this city great. Miles of paved road will not do it. A road that some sacrifice so much for, then once it's built, can't use it until they pay for it. Why? To save a few minutes? I don't understand this. This is not wanted and it's not needed. Please, council members, there's a lot of eyes on this, and I hope this isn't unimportant to you. I hope you're not losing, and I know probably you're not losing your homes, but the snakes in the yard don't pose much of a problem until they're biting your ankles. The opportunity's here, so let's just have compassion for the people and think about this. Go slow, the ball's in your court. We can win this a victory for our beloved city and our future generations. And thank you for the point.
Marguerite Larson will follow Rob.
Rob Norman, Ward 3. I am extremely glad we cut to the chase tonight with a motion to reject. There's been a lot of work done on this. I've been part of that. I agree, there's been a lot of effort. There's been a lot of things go on, but I think the bottom line is we have to reject a resolution. And here's a couple of things. This is part of an email I sent to y'all this morning. The main reason that certain forces in the city, on staff, keep talking about, "We have to have a seat at the table, we have to have a seat at the table, we have to have a resolution to have a seat at the table." No, you don't. No, you don't. There's a case out there that says, in no uncertain terms, no, you don't. You are supposed to already have your seat at the table. There are some who have said, "The state is superior to the municipality." Well, in 1986, our Supreme Court rejected that approach and said, "It's really up to who has the better interest. Does the municipality have the better interest, or does the state have the better interest?" And what they said in doing that, they said, "At the very least, state agencies should, quote, 'consult with the local authorities and sympathetically listen and give every consideration to local objections, problems, and suggestions in order to minimize the conflict as much as possible.'" The OTA is trying to fool you. They haven't told you about that, have they? You are already, the OTA is already under directive, as a public servant themselves, to give you a seat at the table. They have to do that. And I'm going to tell you, I'm a little concerned with doing a resolution and giving some of our staff a seat at the table after what I've heard. You only half, you only half, some of you don't even know this to this day, your staff only half fought the turnpike battle. And there was no, they didn't fight the East-West Connector at all, and there was no good reason for that. Your staff is trying to build a 500-acre mega-industrial park just north of the lake at 72nd and Indian Hills, when and if these turnpikes go through. That's absolutely wrong. There's going to be a lot of public records getting out pretty soon, and they're not going to look very good. This is only the tip of the iceberg. There have been forces in this city who have been fighting for these turnpikes since long before the Supreme Court issued a decision on a now-discredited rule of law to defer to the state agencies. The United States Supreme Court has discredited that rule of law. We're going to see it. It's going to get out. It's-
Oh, Dave, your turn, sorry. Did you see him sitting right there? He's before, Marguerite.
Thank you, Dave Moore, Ward 5 and Ward 3. In the 54 years I've lived in this city, I have never, ever seen the citizens of this town come together and say, "Give us a turnpike." Ever. And when I, when I say the citizens of Norman, I'm excluding the contractors and the builders and the OTA guys and the developers. I'm talking about your regular, everyday, salt-of-the-earth people. Never have they come to their leaders in the city council and said, "Please, give us a turnpike." You know why that is? Because they don't want a turnpike, and everybody knows it. You guys all know it. You want a seat at the table? I don't know what you call this big old thing up here, but that's a pretty doggone big seat, and it's yours, and you need to use it. Now, when we have meetings like this, and I hear from people who really want the turnpikes, I have to ask myself, well, who are they working for? Not the people of Norman? Like, the council's supposed to work for the people of Norman? They're not working for the people of Norman, so when people vote, "Oh, we want these turnpikes" because, well, you're not voting for the people of Norman, which is your job. So that's kind of all I really had to say, is just do your job to support the people of Norman.
It's hard to see faces, it's just red shirts, that's all I can see. Twyla Smith will follow Marguerite.
Hi.
That was a long walk.
Marguerite Larson, Ward 6. So you all have been in meetings, you have been presented with information, you are looking with your constituents, who do not want this turnpike. It makes absolutely no sense. It doesn't bring anything to anyone, except a lot of destruction. So as council members, you have, you have something to say about this. You can either sell the soul of the city, or you can protect its citizens. So we're watching what you're doing. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor?
Mayor, council members, each of you understands your responsibilities to the citizens of Norman, including helping keep us safe and protected. No one knows more than the nine of you the countless, many of them thankless hours you donate to overseeing the stability and growth of Norman. The balance in stability and growth is an incredibly challenging balance. However, we have rules and laws and processes in place to help guide this decision-making. I saw two examples of that today. The first is an intersection that is now a four-way stop. Citizens notified the city of concerns of a dangerous intersection in West Norman at Northwest 60th, that's Western, and Rock Creek Road. Information was gathered by the city that indicated that intersection had become dangerous, with perhaps as many as seven fatality crashes in the past year, seven fatalities. This information was presented to the city. Based on those facts, a decision was made, the intersection at Western and Rock Creek Road is now a four-way stop. Citizens have been protected. Lives will be saved. Thank you for listening to those conservative citizens and taking the right action based on facts you were presented. The second example is the traffic flow on Gray Street. A request was made to the city, studies were done, facts were presented, the decision was made to change the flow of traffic from one way to two ways, as many of us saw driving to the City Hall this evening. This is the Norman process we are each familiar with and support. If the decision needs to be reconsidered, the city of Norman has a process for that as well. Dealing with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority works nothing like our process. Our concern, citizens' voices, have not been heard. No studies have been done to provide you the facts about the safest routes, possible options, serious environmental impact concerns, guarantees of treatment of our citizens displaced by eminent domain, and all of the other very important concerns citizens have voiced to you. The Oklahoma Turnpike Authority does not want your input, your participation, nor to hear your voiced concerns. The OTA wants only one thing, your signature on a partnership agreement. This agreement will take away the city of Norman's control to protect us from the OTA having their way with us. This would be an agreement with devastating effects that you would never be able to take back. You would never be able to gain more information, re-decide, and fix it. You would never be able to fix this. Tonight, you have the opportunity and the power to protect Norman.
I don't see that Amy's come in yet, so Darla LeBlanc. Okay, following Darla will be Adrian Gauthier. I'm sorry if I pronounced, is that you?
Yeah, I'll tell.
Okay.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm Darla LeBlanc, Ward Five, and I'm here to say that instead of agreeing to surrender to the OTA today, the city of Norman should demand that they release the locations of all their proposed turnpikes through our town. It's really quite unbelievable that nearly two years after the Bureau of Reclamation denial of the current south extension route, that OTA hasn't submitted alternatives or any sort of a plan to mitigate the environmental impacts. Why not? Are developers pressuring them to stay as far east as possible to provide the most space for urban sprawl? Today's leaked open records email chain from someone inside the city of Norman lends a lot of credence to that idea. How can OTA possibly ask for a partnership when they don't even know where they want the south extension to go? So now, there's this four-mile-wide swath of uncertainty of that unknown south extension that's impacting people's lives today. Those in the current path are trapped, unable to sell our homes or move. There's a house in this situation that I have seen go pending four times. It's been for sale, and then it's still on the market today after a year and a half. I think that buyers eventually realize, oh, it's in this proposed turnpike path, you know, that path the feds actually denied quite a while ago. Then there are people who don't currently have a line running through their home on today's map, but they may be affected if the south extension moves, and many of them are still oblivious. I was messaged this week by a man who bought a house near 60th Avenue about eight months ago. He was horrified to learn, last week, by the way, that there is a turnpike in the planning stages for two and a half years, with the potential to cut through his recently purchased home. He is a partially paralyzed veteran whose home is being modified by the VA to make it handicap accessible. The cost of that is very substantial, and he wanted to know if the OTA would pay the VA back if they eminent domain him. So many people are already being hurt by these theoretical turnpikes. OTA is pressuring Norman to fully cooperate when OTA doesn't have federal permission for their route, but what they do have is a four-mile-wide black hole through the middle of their plans that they are intentionally ignoring. It is completely unreasonable to consider a partnership in these conditions. Once you shake hands with the devil, you have to accept that he is in control. Don't give OTA control.
I'll just make a brief comment. For those of you that signed up before the meeting in the back of the room, your names will still be called. There are two pages of people that signed up ahead of you online, so we'll get to you. It's just, I just wanted you to know that. Okay, next, we have Tiffany Stevens, and Susan Bergen will follow Tiffany.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Stevens, Ward Five. I sent an email out, one last week and one yesterday, and it was kind of, ended up being longer than I planned, but thank you for those of who read it and emailed me back. But I just wanted to hit some of the highlights. First, if OTA wanted to work with us, they should have done so from the beginning. They should have come to the city of Norman and said, "Hey, we think we need this," for whatever reason, for traffic or whatever, "What do you guys think? Where do you guys want it?" And they didn't do that. They did all of their planning in secret, and they knew, they did it in secret because they knew that the city told them no in the 90s, and they knew the legislature told them no. They wouldn't redo the laws to, to put this route in, but they decided they would just wait a few years and then do it anyway. So I also think, and I don't know if you guys know this, but they, before they announced it in February of 2022, they bought up all the domain names that were anti-turnpike. They were trying to control and censor any opposition to this. Second, they will not hold up their end of the deal. I think you guys have heard a lot of evidence lately of deals that they did not hold up their end of. We're tired of being lied to by the OTA, and we're tired of the corruption. Third, we already have a resolution from 2022, and they have not done the environmental studies, they have not done alternate route studies, and they've not done any studies on the impact of the Norman city residents. They haven't even counted up how many homes that are going to be affected. We did that, and we came up with that number, and it didn't take very long. This is shocking and unacceptable. We cannot work with the OTA until these studies are done, because we cannot determine what's reasonable and what's responsible until we know what and who all is affected. Furthermore, the, the one study that they have done, which is the traffic study, was a copy of older data from the Kickapoo, and to my knowledge, no, no third party has reviewed that study to determine if this route is even needed or if it will even do any good. I mean, they've got the study, but the council bond oversight approved conditionally on that study, and I don't think anybody ever went back to review the study and say, "Yes, this is needed." And we all know that it's not really needed, and one of the claims was that it'll divert traffic off I-35 going to Tulsa, but if you go from Dallas to Tulsa, there's already a quicker and cheaper route than going north. You can Google it and see, and I think it's four hours and two minutes if you go, and you won't even be on I-35. So if they build this with that intention, you're actually bringing traffic over. But I think at most, it would save you maybe a couple minutes, but I think if you look at the actual data, it won't save you any time at all, and nobody's going to be using-
Debbie Salzman will follow Susan.
I'm Susan Bergen, Ward Two, my rock star, Matt Peacock. I have the 240 acres at the corner of 60th and Highway Nine, and I'm here as that landowner. I think the statement that you want to protect the land is truly disingenuous at the lake. During the recent rain event, the heavy sediment-laden water crossed over the roadway and flooded my pastures at 60th and Highway Nine. But more importantly, it carried all of that material to our great lake. I did not take, I did take the time to go to Walmart, to the supercenter that was built here in Norman, and the engineers there got the same nine-inch rain as everybody else and retained all of the water off of that huge parking lot and that building. I further traveled just a little bit east from that, and there was a development developed 20 years ago by one of Norman's outstanding developers, the Serby Brothers, and they had held all their water. It was within three inches of going over the dam. I have pictures if you need to see it. As I have repeatedly witnessed, the stormwater requirements can be engineered for Walmarts and engineered to hold water, yet we don't hold the water on our developments here in Norman. We, as a city, have continued to be resistant to innovative and simple solutions to clean the water. We are sending to our Great Lake, Thunderbird. I am here to contend that if we would be a beacon of quality management, then we could expect the same from our State Department of Transportation. They see the mess we are creating with our substandard water retention ponds all over the city. The infill of our city also creates lot less water infiltration areas, making more runoff. The density, while I'm not opposed to the density in core Norman, has no water retention and has huge downstream effects. We need to address all of the runoff problems we have as a city now, before the lake fills up with our sediment. The Grove and Moore, Oklahoma, had six inches of rain. We have helped them with their stormwater issues. A 13-acre site with 115 units, it held all of the six inches of rain off of Moore and Lake Thunderbird. It cleaned the water, filtered it, and let it out slowly. As we demonstrated our poor management with our project at I-35 and Highway Nine interchange, you sprayed chemicals at my huge resistance at the wrong time. You then put out seed that cannot grow in the chemical environment, that requires a different pH. I have studied it extensively with the OTA staff and the Department of Environmental Quality.
Debbie Salzman. Cynthia Rogers will follow Debbie.
My name is Debbie Salzman. My husband and I have lived in Norman for 48 years and in Ward Five for 36 years. We had planned on dying here, but now, who knows what'll happen? When I look at the big picture, I don't understand how Norman will be able to operate, buy drinking water, and provide basic city services without the revenue that will be lost to TIF and lost to the cost of maintaining turnpike frontage roads, and I'm sure that there are other turnpike costs that we are not privy to. So I don't know that we'll be able to live out our lives here as planned, and actually, I don't know that I'd want to. With OTA and TIF, it feels like an octopus with its tentacles coming to gobble Norman up. I don't want to live in a place that believes it's okay to destroy our green spaces, only to fill them with hot concrete, and I certainly don't want to live in a community filled with dollar signs and greed. There are more important things, and it's really hard to believe that you guys don't realize that. I, so I think it's obvious that I'm a hard no on turnpikes and on this resolution, and I'm a hard no on our citizens paying for OU to build an unneeded arena. I didn't know that you think that Pike people are lying and don't know what they're talking about. That's really insulting and an erosion of trust. You must not truly realize the amount of work that has been done. I think the Pike people have worked their tails off to tell the council how they can stop the OTA, and you don't believe them? I can only assume that there's something in it for you. And as hard, as hard as it is apparently, I ask that you dig deep and be worthy of our trust and worthy of your oath. Prove my assumption wrong. I ask that you do your duty and protect the citizens from these invasions. You've been instructed on how to do it, and if you still don't understand, all you've got to do is ask. The resources are right here in this chamber, ready to help you.
Good evening, Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four. I've never been so proud of my community as I've been to see all these people here tonight, to see the leadership that experts have taken to educate people about the issue, to inform them about the issue. And I've never been so disappointed as hearing people who aren't experts just want to ignore actual experts. We're a university town. We're really lucky. We have people who are experts in hydrology, economics, legal issues. So I beg you, we should listen to those. Instead of saying anything to take up a lot of time, what I would ask is that people in the audience, if your house is in the path where you might lose your home, will you stand up or raise your hand? We're talking about people's homes. They've invested their lives. They've made, you talk about investing in the community. These are people who've invested in the community. And the power of eminent domain to an agency that is run by people who are not elected officials is egregious. I hope, I think I saw some legislators here in the room, and I'm going to beg them, we need to do something about that. But in the meantime, the city of Norman does have the authority and the power to protect our water and to protect our citizens, and I urge you to reject, or approve the motion to reject this, because passing this resolution will, you'll give up all your leverage, and I think we can fight this. Thank you.
James Livingston. James Livingston. Mayumi Windler. I see Mayumi coming in. Following Mayumi will be Cheryl Hoggatt.
Hi, I'm Mayumi Windler of Ward Two. Okay, a couple of things. So why do you think that the East-West connector was chosen basically on the border of Norman and Moore? So it wouldn't have so much pushback from either one, because really, who cares? It's on the border, right? What if the location were instead Main Street? Would that change things? I mean, it's arbitrary, isn't it, that they chose Indian Hills? What if it were Lindsay, cutting straight through OU? How would that change things? Okay, next thing. Yeah, you saw those hands raised? These are people that are going to be without homes. We already can't adequately house people in Norman. How are we going to house all of these additional families? Stuff to think about. Thank you.
Following Cheryl Hoggatt will be Annie Menz.
Cheryl Hoggatt, Ward Five. What I was going to say tonight has changed about 15 times. Each time I get on the website and see new things brought to light through the Open Records Act, my stress has gone from here to here. We are Norman. We are above this. We are above the back door, not letting the community know what's going, what's being planned behind- planned behind closed doors. And probably some of you council members, which is sad. So I'm going to read part of the emails I have been sending you, plus some other things. "It has not been suggested, nor has a council member proposed, to pick and choose which laws to enforce, ignore, nullify, or disobey. Mayor Heikala's statement that individuals on the council will may expose themselves and the city to legal consequences was very out of line." He also suggested that we cannot ask the state, or ask OTA to do more than what the state requires. Reading from FEMA, the guidance for flood risk analysis and mapping, several states have adopted flood plain management laws and regulations that are more restrictive than NFIP minimum requirements. In addition, many communities, us, could, have adopted more restrictive floodway or placed additional restrictions on floodway development. So yes, we can. This next quote, I want you to remember because I'm going to be using it throughout the rest of this. "The big thing is, is a public going to be able to trust us?" So this was brought to light through the open records request, and I'm just going to read parts of this. Rob Norman alluded to part of it. On this one, it says, she shared an idea, hang on, I'll go to the next one. She shared that only one, there's only one mega site in the entire state of Oklahoma for industrial development, and that means 500 acres industrial site with sewer, water, power, and high internet, or high-speed internet. Without the blink of an eye, the next one says, Chris, start working on your numbers.
Elizabeth Foreman will follow Annie.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time. I am State Representative Annie Menz. I hadn't planned, I hadn't planned on standing up here to speak today because I primarily like to focus on state-level issues, but I'm also a Normanite. I represent the east side of our city, and I've worked tirelessly to enforce transparency and accountability regarding a turnpike that has been forced upon us. But after reading an email from our mayor about those of us who oppose said turnpike, I'm once again standing here with my neighbors, myself, my constituents, your constituents, whom you deemed liars, have once again returned to City Hall to remind you that the dais will be accountable to the people. In my nearly two years in office, I have vocally and legislatively opposed to this turnpike to such a degree that my work against it has drawn an opponent recruited and supported by those who would take homes from thousands of my neighbors. But I and these constituents sitting behind me will not be intimidated or silenced by political games, childish name-calling, or slanderous comments. Attacks leveled at us only strengthen our resolve. We understand what it means to have honor, courage, and commitment as core values. Honor means keeping our word to our constituents. Courage means taking the lead, no matter the risk. And commitment means consistently fighting for justice, no matter the obstacles ahead. These values remind me that I work for all residents, not just the ones that I agree with. These values drive every decision I make, and although public service is challenging work, it's a lot easier when we remember who we work for. I hope you'll work harder to listen to all citizens that you represent. I hope you'll see that the opposition to this turnpike is not partisan. We Pike people here are conservative, liberal, independent, and everything in between. For us, it's not about picking the winning side. It's about saving our homes, our environment, our livelihoods, our way of life, and our family legacies. We are your constituents, and we would love for you to represent us.
Thank you, Representative Menz. I am Elizabeth Foreman, Ward 6. Two months ago, when I stepped down from City Council, I joked that the city of Norman was my boyfriend, and not to mess with my boyfriend because I would be watching. And two months later, I am back to speak against a trash resolution. The city staff and council can try to gaslight and deceive and conflate fact and fiction with everybody else in this room, but apart from Councilmember Holman, I was on this dais longer than the rest of you and Councilmember Peacock, longer on the dais than the rest of you when this started, and we were not given any information. We were deceived. We were very softballed any sort of information, and our hands were tied. We had to turn to the people in this audience to get factual information about state laws and things that we could do to try to protect our people. I was behind the curtain of Oz for the last four years. You cannot deceive me. I know what this resolution is. It is handing over these people and all the residents in our community and our neighboring communities on the altar of the OTA. We are gift-wrapping them and handing them over. We're acknowledging that you're going to come and you're going to do it anyway. We're not going to fight for you, but we're going to work with you for it. It's a trash resolution, and I hope you all vote against it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, I want to apologize in advance. I'm pretty sure I'm going to mess this name up. Tammy Bagger, Buger? Jana Corn will follow Tammy.
I'm Tammy Boofur, Ward 5. I have a business in Ward 6, longtime Norman resident. Thank you for the time. So much has already been said. I just want you to remember, when you're voting on this, that the stress level already for the people that are affected, could be affected, might be affected, eventually affected, is crushing. And often, the largest asset that anybody has is their home. The values, the houses are being devalued already. You cannot buy and sell as typical out there with this looming. It's looming, and it hasn't even been studied. It hasn't even been proven. They haven't given us what they are supposed to give us as a city to even consider this. So I am just asking that you remember that every rooftop is a home. It has value that is intrinsic in this community. And those of us who have been here a short time and a long time are really hoping that you will thoughtfully consider this and exercise your legal right not to join with a corrupt OTA. Thank you for your time.
Fred Bidwell will follow Jana.
Good evening. My name is Jana Corn, and I live in Ward 5, and I'll be representing the Sierra Club, the Red Earth Group, today as a member of its executive committee. So first, I'd like to remind everyone in the room that a resolution should be a directive from the city council to the city staff on how to proceed with an important issue. A resolution should not be a document that strong-arms the city council into agreeing to the demands of the OTA. Therefore, we urge you to reject this proposal. The Red Earth Group had originally endorsed the original Nash-Pikeoff OTA resolution a month ago because we understand that both these turnpike extensions will threaten our water, our drinking water, greatly increase stormwater runoff, and increase flooding risk in Norman. The Nash resolution provided a clear roadmap of how the city council can use its legal authority to stop these toll roads. This roadmap started with a strong opposition to the toll roads, and it did not contain any language that subjugates Norman to the demands of the OTA like tonight's resolution. Also, most of the carryover language from Nash's resolution to protect our water will be null and void if we agree to any type of partnership resolution. This is because cooperation with the OTA means the city will agree to all turnpike plans, designs, routes by early September before any environmental impact statements are completed and before federal permits and permissions are granted. This is unacceptable. In fact, we now believe that any agreement to negotiate with the OTA at all, ever, is unacceptable. And because of the diligent work of Pikeoff OTA board members and others, we've learned of just too many examples of other cities that clearly show that the OTA cannot be trusted at all. And finally, it is our understanding that state law requires the OTA to form an official partnership with the municipality before they begin construction on its lands and roads. The city of Norman must exercise its legal authority to prevent the OTA from trespassing, and the city council must vote down the partnership resolution. So it will not, so this, so it will be possible to do this. And then I just want to end with like a visualization. What OTA wants to do to the east side of Norman will look like an F-5 tornado destroyed it. I also want you to know that all those people that stood up and the people that didn't stand up, they have families, and they have friends, and they're voters, too. So anyway, thank you for your service. We love the city that we call home, and we want to preserve and protect it, not just for ourselves, but future generations, too. Thank you.
Pamela Post will follow Fred.
With liberty and justice for all, I think we all pledged. I'm Fred Bidwell, resident of Norman for 46 years, my whole life. I'm here today to urge the council to vote no on the amended partnership resolution. The Oklahoma Turnpike Authority lacks democratic representation for those whose land is at risk. Aside from the governor, all members of the OTA are appointed by the governor, not elected. If a government agency is empowered to seize private property, the affected citizens must have a say in who holds that power. This is a basic principle of democracy and justice, and one that was clearly stated by the mayor during his election campaign. In fact, I campaigned for and voted for the mayor largely because of his principled stance on this issue. Does he still stand by those principles? Or was that just more of the empty campaign rhetoric that has come to characterize American politics? I'm not opposed to eminent domain and principle, but it is a power that demands robust democratic oversight. The current structure of the OTA with its lack of elected representation and vested interest in expanding its budget through more turnpikes does not meet these criteria. We cannot afford to trust in the goodwill of unelected officials when such significant consequences are at stake. Instead, we should demand a democratic process where the people have a substantial voice. We must not move forward with any turnpike projects until the democratic process is secured. It has been said that we must agree to this partnership because the turnpike project cannot be stopped, and we must partner with the OTA in order to negotiate. This is nonsense. The OTA would not be using strong-arm tactics against the city if the city's partnership were not crucial. They need the city's partnership and are willing to threaten us to get it. Are these the actions of a democratic authority that is working for the people? This partnership resolution is based on a problem identified by the OTA and a solution that conveniently aligns with their financial interests with no democratic participation by the people most affected by this turnpike. How will you feel about endorsing this partnership if it turns out in the future that this process was corrupted and you did not stand up for the Norman citizens whose lives were torn apart by this turnpike? Every person in the path of this project stands to lose considerably. A real estate appraisal does not replace the years spent developing land, building lives and livelihoods around a specific place. Every person on this council chose to represent and protect the citizens of this city. These property owners, however, did not choose to be the targets of an unelected bureaucratic authority. This turnpike will irrevocably and profoundly shape the future of Norman in ways that cannot entirely be predicted. Let's be perfectly clear. If you vote to endorse this partnership, you are voting for hundreds of properties to be taken, along with a profound loss and consequence for each of those property owners. You will bear the share of responsibility for that decision and for the consequences. This is not an abstraction. This is real. You were elected by the people of Norman, and not by the unelected OTA, not by the state government, but by the people of Norman. This will probably be the most amentious consequential vote you will cast during your time serving the people of Norman. Now is the time for personal courage for the sake of the people of Norman, for the hundreds of families who will be directly affected, and for the future of our city. Please stand with the citizens of Norman and vote against this partnership. Thank you.
Cassie Hirschfeld will follow Pam.
Hey, Cassie. Hi, good evening. I'm Pam Post, and I'm from Ward 5. Got it right this week. This resolution was started by the request of the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, or OTA. It leaned heavily in favor of the OTA with a token nod to the city of Norman. Upon examination of the original resolution, several council members recognized that it did not contain the proper protections for Norman's citizens, their homes or their drinking water. What evolved was a new resolution that still contained OTA's demands, along with many requests from the city attempting to correct the deficiencies. A mishmash of a resolution. Thereafter, several meetings were held. Oklahoma's for Responsible Transportation, ORT, held an in-depth study session for council with the intent to educate members on how OTA functions, their game plan, and experiences of other government agencies. Many council members have chosen to open their minds and listen to the information given. Some cannot even look at us tonight. Some have chosen to state that ORT, the Pike people, are not telling the truth. I have difficulty accepting that an organization I have chosen to participate with has a membership of people who lie. A lot has happened in the last few weeks: variations of resolutions, meetings, email campaigns, behind-the-door conversations, rumors, falsehoods, and truths. So not, so tonight, it has all come together. Council has made a motion not to approve a resolution that capitulates to the OTA. Thank you for listening to the truths and making a wise decision that protects the citizens of Normans. And thank you for letting me speak. I do appreciate your time and work that you have put into this. Have a nice evening.
Mary Boran will follow Cassie.
Hi, I'm Cassie Hirschfeld, Ward 5. I realize it may be the college professor in me, but I would like to ask Mr. Pyle if you could do us the courtesy of joining the rest of us here in the meeting.
Please, address council.
But I, the reason for this is that some of those emails from staff that were redacted and released out on social media today, there is not a specific author associated with them, but what does come across overwhelmingly is a profound contempt for the public, for citizens, for the democratic process, and for the engagement and the strong feelings that we have about the turnpike issue. And it, what this information does and the perception that perhaps the city staff have not been honest with the mayor or with the public, what this does is erodes confidence in the entire organization and the entire democratic process. And so just as a personal courtesy, specifically to you, Mayor Heikala, I would ask that in your interactions with staff, which I have watched online and attended a study session, overwhelmingly I see you silencing the voices of experts and highlighting the voices of people who appear to have potential conflicts of interest. I will again remind you of the story of Sean O'Leary, the Norman city manager who did not speak honestly, and this is recorded in the Norman transcript and on multiple live streams that are archived, about the impact of the turnpike, the eminent domain abuses that took place with the Kickapoo, and then who quickly went and took a job at Poland Associates, the lead contractor that is getting millions of dollars for these turnpike projects. This creates tremendous distrust in the community. It erodes the democratic process, and it makes us all very cynical. So we're here in numbers again to reaffirm that citizens are here to support not just, we're not just here against the turnpikes, but we're here to remind you that we are for democracy and that you work for us, not for any private contractors affiliated with the OTA.
I'm State Senator Mary Boran. I represent Senate District 16. I consider myself the lobbyist for 80,000 people because- I consider myself the lobbyist for 80,000 people because they don't have a lobbyist at the Capitol. The road builders do. The OTA has a pretty effective liaison as well. And I've spent two years with my colleagues at the state Capitol, a bipartisan, bicameral attempt to hold an agency accountable that has grown since Gene Stipe's years into this mess that we see today. Over the years, there's been a lack of accountability. And I would just ask you that are on the fence, I know some of you, that this is just a matter of just rubber stamping and moving on, but I do believe that there's enough of you that are on the fence, that I ask that you will dignify the passion and the dignity and the preparation, the evidence and the facts that you've heard here today. These people in Norman deserve the dignity of a well-deliberated decision. I also ask that you will join us in representing the most amazing, competent, dedicated, devoted group of people that cross, this is the rarest thing that's ever happened in Oklahoma history, to have this kind of people work together to hold government accountable. And you have the opportunity to stand with us. You don't have to go down the path that every other body and board that have been in these chairs that you've been in have, have failed to do. The Turnpike Authority, they failed to hold them accountable. The Transportation Commission, they failed to hold them accountable except for one person. The Supreme Court, there's a wonderful dissent. And you're sitting, it's your turn now, and you get to stand with the people of Norman based on facts and evidence and a good business decision, good economic decision, good environmental decision, or you can make a politically corrupt, politically convenient decision like Gene Stipe would have you do. I hope that you stand with us and not Gene Stipe.
Jesse Matlock will follow Leslie.
My name is Leslie Noble. I live at 3848 Bristol Drive. I live in Ward Three. I'm opposed to this partnership because after attending the study session, I am learning more about the OTA. I don't believe that they have any interest in having a partnership with Norman or caring about what Norman thinks. I think they're looking for a rubber stamp to do whatever they want, and I hope that Norman would not give it to them and find another way to discuss the future plans.
I'd like to thank the city council for your time tonight to listen to the citizens of Norman. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Jesse Matlock, lifelong resident of Norman, Ward Five. I'm over at 48th and Indian Hills. And the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority has decided they want to put a turnpike right on my house. All right? The Matlock family, we established our presence in this area in 1890 at the spot where my aunt lives right now, on our 87-acre family farm. I live next door. We've been providing food for this community for 130 years. I was born here, I graduated here, I went to OU, I work here, I live here. Okay? That's who I am. I am Norman. Outside my window every day, I see every kind of animal that you can see. It's my little paradise out there. I'm working hard to promote regenerative agriculture and ecotourism. I want my children to have the same sunsets and sunrises that I had when I grew up on my grandparents' farm. This OTA, we have to ask us, what is it for? Right? What is it for? It's not the will of the people. Simple engineering can achieve much better transportation needs than this achieves. Right? It's always been about the money. My peers have presented evidence of budgets and where the money goes to, what the citizens receive for our toll monies, how much bond money gets paid. The mayor has said that we have an oath to defend the Constitution, and we do. The Declaration of Independence states the Creator gave us unalienable rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. This, the force-taking of homes, is none of those. It goes on to say that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is right of people to alter or to abolish it. So I say abolish the OTA. So I encourage the council to vote against any agreement with the OTA. Like I said before, my peers have presented enough evidence for you to make a solid decision. There are some on the council, maybe, here that might seem to be afraid to stand up to the OTA. Well, guess what? You don't have to worry about it, because I'm not afraid, and all these people aren't afraid to stand up to them. We have the courage to stand up to the OTA and for what's right. We just need all of you to be our voice. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Catherine Brunk is next, followed by Paul Wilson.
I'm good.
Did you say you're good?
Yeah. Okay.
Hi, Catherine Brunk, Ward Eight. I live in the Blue Lakes Edition, just right off Indian Hills, so I'm not directly in the path of the turnpike, but it will be in my front yard. So a lot of really good input from everybody here in this room tonight, so excuse me if any of this is redundant, and excuse my rant. Thousands of citizens, I guess collectively known to some as Pike people now, have nothing short of begged you to prevent this. We don't need it, and we certainly don't want it. That's all you need to know. We don't have to listen to the OTA's side of the story or entertain them while they dangle carrots in the form of a big sidewalk to nowhere in our faces. All we have to do is say no. You were put in these positions by your constituents to represent the citizens' best interests in the governance of Norman, not your best interests, and certainly not the best interests of any outside agencies. Unfortunately, it seems that certain members of this body are under the impression they get to run the citizens in the best interests of the city and quite literally out of the city, at the behest of an agency that has notoriously left nothing but destruction and loss in its wake. It is not unlawful to oppose a government action which is not only unjust and unethical, but also wholly counter to the ultimate good. In fact, it's your duty to oppose it. It's all of our duty. The Constitution gives us that right and that responsibility. However, since some of us can't seem to accurately cite the law and the leadership here wants to try to hide behind the Constitution by lying to the council about what powers they have and bully them into voting against their constituents, see Statute 69, Section 1716B, which is part of the state constitution, in case you wondered, though I hope you've heard it a few times by now. In short, it gives municipalities the power to grant permission for these OTA projects to move forward and requires the authority to obtain consent and partnership from the city to move forward. Therefore, it also gives you the power to deny access. Consent compelled by force, threat, deception, or intimidation is not consent, it's coercion. Do not let yourselves be victims of coercion. Deny access. Vote no on the amended resolution. Vote no for the turnpike.
Greg Fitter is next, followed by Randy Carter.
Greg Fitter, Norman, Ward Five. My topic was touched on, but I will expand it. Just one of many reasons why this resolution should not be approved. During the discovery phase of the Open Meeting Act litigation, a fact came to light. The fact is that two weeks prior to OTA's public announcement of the access program, the OTA directed the purchase of 23 domain names it felt could be used by those opposed to the access program. They were names such as StopAccessOklahoma.com, StopTheTurnpike.com, and OklahomansAgainstTurnpikes.com. The Norman transcript and State Impact Oklahoma published relevant articles. In the State Impact article, OU Professor of Public Relations Jensen Moore states, quote, "One of the ethical issues involved in public relations is failure to provide the public with information that allows them to make informed decisions. Purchasing domain names where oppositional information can readily be shared is denying the public access to alternative viewpoints that would allow them to be informed." It is not about disinformation, it's about denying oppositional information. From a public relations standpoint, this is unethical of the OTA to do because they are purposefully attempting to limit any information that publics need to make decisions about this project," end quote. From purchasing potential opposition domain names to blocking common sense legislation, the OTA has proven itself to be an agency deeply rooted in secrecy and one that works diligently to suppress opposing views. If this resolution were to be approved, it will likely be propagandized by OTA and its cohorts in their ongoing efforts at the state Capitol to silence any and all opposition. Please stand strong and united with your fellow citizens to repulse the invasion of unjustified and unwanted turnpikes into our uniquely wonderful city. I respectfully urge you to vote no on this resolution.
Stephen Ellis will follow Randy.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the privilege of being here tonight to speak to you all. I got to tell you, I take a little bit of umbrage at being referred to as Pike people not telling the truth, and that kind of hurts me. But be it, be it is, as it is, that's where we stand. Not telling the truth. We've referred to a few things tonight about staff and what staff has done, and you all have to rely on staff for information about this turnpike, for research and all kinds of things. We've also done a lot of that kind of stuff, too. But I'm referring to the study session that just occurred on a Sunday. No, no, that was on a Tuesday, wasn't it? Yes, on a Tuesday. There were some issues about dealing with contracts and agreements between the OTA and other entities like county commissioners, Board of County Commissioners, or a city or other things. And I believe that none of our people that were allowed 15 minutes each to recite vociferous information that we've gathered were allowed to answer any questions, and one of the staff members was asked if he was aware of any agreements or contracts or anything of that nature were in the works. And I believe that he said no, there were none that he was aware of. And I want to call your attention to the fact that at that moment, there was a pack in the packet that one of our people had given you all, there was a document called an agreement between the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority and the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County, a signed agreement. So my question is, is if you all are here to rely on staff, and staff doesn't give you the information that's out there, and we've had some people alluding to the idea that maybe staff is working for the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, that's hard to say. But my question is, is if this was, if this was, if this was there and it wasn't found that you all were asked about it, was that willful intent or lack of competence? Either way, that brings to me the question is how reliable is the information that staff has given to you? We've done tons and tons and tons of research. These are the Pike people. We do know what we're talking about, and I, I've always prided myself on telling the truth, and I take a little bit of umbrage at that comment. But anyway, I urge you, I appreciate the motion.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I want to start with just a parliamentary clarification if I can, so check me if I'm right here. The motion on the floor is a motion to reject the resolution. So if you're opposed to the resolution, you got to vote yes when we get done with this, okay? So let's make sure that that's clear, no mistakes. If you're doing it the right way, you're going to vote yes. It's becoming clearer and clearer as these Open Records Act records are getting out that the point of the turnpikes that are going through Norman are not to move people from place to place across the state, but rather to sort of crack open Norman's carefully negotiated zoning decisions to keep the character of East Norman agricultural. In other words, we're faced with this problem because there are people in the state, and apparently some people in our community as well, who are interested in opening agricultural Norman up to much more intense development. We learned about one project that people are excited about now. Robert Norman discussed it. It's a giant transportation hub that's beyond 48th Street. But it's become clear that this is very much a special interest project, and the special interest is asking the city of Norman to go along with a proposal that helps them at the expense, not only of Norman money, but the housing of people who live in Norman's, that are literally eminent domaining people's housing. That's why I think it's important that you are very, very clear with OTA. Norman does not want this turnpike. Not only does it not want the turnpike, but they're going to insist on building it. We do not want any exits on this turnpike. They can only build the ones that they have a legal right to build according to the Supreme Court, and if they want to deed them to us or have them otherwise connected into the city of Norman, we should say no. We don't want any of that stuff. A big part of what's going on is an attempt to invade East Norman for the benefit of the development community over the state, and we do not need that. So vote yes on the motion to reject the resolution, all right?
Ray Young is next, followed by Ron Carter-Manson. Is Ray Young here? Hey, you're up, sir.
Hello? Mayor, council people? I live, currently reside at 2055 Southeast 60th. The, and I'm tired of hearing all this rhetoric because OTA has got us stirring things up with you guys. You guys are having to absorb it. It's a big shell game. OTA has been lying from the get-go. They're an over 70-year-old organization. When they were building HE Bailey, they promised the people that once it was paid for, it would be a freeway. Guess what? Been paid for so many times this year. But I spent a lot of time writing up a little speech about, you know, about what's going on. But I'm tired of the corruption in our government, our county commissioners, council people. I'll say it. I'm not going to name names, but you're judged by your associations. The people, they're unscrupulous, unethical builders in this town, and state is trying to remove all regulations so people can get, build more, build more houses. This is only the tip of the iceberg. What they're wanting to do is put a trucking route with distribution centers around Oklahoma City and all this whole area because the center, it went right in the middle. Goes everywhere, goes here and there. So I, the acreage I'm sitting on is five acres. There are more 100-year-old oaks on it than I've ever seen in my life, and over 100 years old. There's historical remnants on the property, and it has, it's beautiful. There's historical remnants on the property, and it has, it's beautiful. I get to see deer, I get to see cows. I mean, I don't have to go to a zoo to see them, all right? So, long story short, it just really frustrates me because of the blatant stonewalling. And besides, I have not heard one thing about the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution. Read Article Number 5, Article Number 5. And I heard it muttered the other day in a, in a planning session, that the, y'all were afraid of being sued if you didn't, if you didn't, if you voted for it. Well, I'll tell you, I'll let you in a little secret. There's 600 households that have the same option to sue you.
And Margaret Blevins will follow him.
Hello, Luigi Povani, Ward 4. The turnpike will be right in my backyard because all that green space back there, it's for everyone's in Norman to enjoy, and everyone will be worse off if it gets converted in a road and a slab of concrete. This resolution, in a quote, wants to protect and preserve the critical areas of Norman while at the same time writing a blank check for the OTA to do whatever they want. Because the OTA is the epitome of big government, who is far away from all the consequences of direction and don't care about their citizen. What we're seeing with these turnpikes and what we're seeing with the teeth is that there are three, people in three positions. There is most of us here paying taxes, someone even worse for risking to lose their houses. There is someone far away that doesn't care at all about the watershed over drinking water because they're drinking their water somewhere else. And then, and those are the ones that are set to profit from all this destruction. And then there are the people that the special interest about. We've seen how the OTA is acting, we've seen how some of the city council is acting, and you can see who's in the pocket of who from the reports of the election financing. Building more roads, building more rains is a 100-year-old idea of development. It's something that's proven over and over again to not work. You want to move people, you want to move things faster, build some rails. We've been talking a long time of a train to Oklahoma City that will make 35 easier for everyone else, and trains are wonderful. We don't need a seat at the table. This is our table OTA is coming to. They are unwelcome guests at our table, and we should not entertain their idea, we should not open the door to them. We need to keep them out and push back to this destruction of Norman. That's it. Please reject.
Judith Wilkins will follow Margaret. Yeah, go ahead, Margaret.
Hi, my name is Margaret Blevins. I live in Slaughterville. Good luck getting my mom out of her house. Seriously. She is, was married to a military man. Do any of you guys know what's going on with the Bureau of Reclamation? Are they supporting this still to keep OTA out? You do realize if you cede your rights to Norman's water, they'll just step aside. Why should they do anything if we don't? Do you know what a TMDL is? Total Maximum Daily Load? There is a TMDL on Lake Thunderbird. It's been there probably since day one, actually 2013. It says, it sets limits to what can come into that lake safely. Now unfortunately, it's not a regulatory TMDL. I checked it out. But it says how much nutrients, sediments is allowed to keep that lake what it is now. Thunderbird is on the 303D list. It is an impaired watershed. If you don't know what impaired means, it's diminished, it's damaged, it's weakened. So we are doing, the state is doing, agencies like DEQ do what they can. But it doesn't matter how careful OTA is. Building a turnpike next to an impaired watershed is undoubtedly going to introduce a larger sediment load which can smother an already stressed aquatic life and their habitat. Road construction can also introduce heavy metals, oils, and other toxic substances, no matter how careful they are. The debris from construction, traffic, and spillage can be absorbed by the lake's soil and carried with runoff water directly into the lake. Mr. Mayor, have you considered what will happen if OTA pollutes Lake Thunderbird beyond its ability? And Norman no longer has drinking water? Thank you.
Sean Studley will follow Judith.
Judith Wilkins, Ward 4. Please extrapolate how many more people feel the way that all these people here feel who aren't here this evening. Over a decade ago, Norman City Council passed an ordinance limiting development east of 48th to protect our water supply. A turnpike through this area would totally annihilate that protection, as Ms. Blevins just laid out. The destruction of over 600 homes, any place in the U.S., would be major, major news. And where are these people going to move? You want to have more people come to Norman? You're going to lose people. Where will they move to? There aren't 600 places available now in Norman. As Councilmember Ball said earlier this evening, Norman looks out for its constituents. These are your constituents, not the OTA. I encourage you to reject the resolution, and I encourage you to reject any turnpikes in Norman. Thank you.
Good evening, Norman, and councilmembers, mayor. Cheryl Ann Dinsel, I have property in Wards 4 and 6. And I would like to remind council that we're watching. All of Norman is watching, okay? These people here have their eyes on you, but all of Norman is watching. And your actions impact every single person, not only here, but for generations. So you have to be able to live with your decisions. I implore you to drop the partnership with OTA. Thank you.
Phillip and Alice Denton will follow Evan.
Hi, thank you. Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue, also representing Uthrons. Where's the debate? I presume that there must have been some discussion, some showing, some data about efficient transportation and more demand for trucking and the need to have these corners shaved off. There has got to have been data accumulated. I don't know, maybe not. Maybe, maybe OTA just does things on a whim. So, okay, we're going to pander to the big oil companies, we're going to pander to the big shipping companies who, because they push their 18-wheelers on our roads, and they have this amount of political power and this amount of lobbyists, okay, this is going to help them. This is destructive and it's dumb. There's no research, there's, again, they're disregarding the experts in this university town. They are not pro-intelligence, they are not pro-life of the mind, they're not even pro-environment, they're not even pro-life. I imagine they're all, they'd say that they're Christians, but they're not pro-life Christians because you don't destroy habitat. I've heard it from several people, this is about future generations. I'm from Ward 7, I'm not from Ward 5. But everybody's been talking about deer and things that I love. What if we had some type of a bus route that took people who are from the other parts of Norman out there and they could experience what it is that you all experience, just for a moment, just for a couple hours maybe? They'd love it, we'd love it. There would be some revolutionaries who are willing to, I bet there are some in here right now. Would you, would you lock yourself to a bulldozer? To stop this? Well, it's not going to pass. This cannot pass. Thank you.
Okay. Pull it down a little bit for you.
Hello, my name is Alice, and this is my brother Phillip Denton. We are here to talk about the turnpike and where it's going to be going through and stuff. The turnpike will be going, will be going through really close to me and my brother's house, and through many other people's houses, and through their properties, and maybe even some of their businesses. It will be also causing pollution to the environment and the water we drink out of, and for animals to lose their houses or homes, and then it will cause an imbalance and stuff. And who here is here to make the turnpike come? Nobody. It's just anti-turnpike, so why do we need it? That's my question. Everybody here is against the turnpike. Nobody's here to say, "Turnpike, please come." So what's the point of the turnpike if nobody wants it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Amy Serrato.
Hi, everybody. Amy Serrato, Ward 5. I'm assuming I'm still talking about the resolution and partnership? Okay. So obviously, you've put a motion on to reject it, and that's great. Thank you so much. We don't need a partnership with the OTA. And I've written to all of you to talk to you about why they want to partner, and I just want to reiterate that first, people in the audience, maybe that don't know exactly why. So their playbook for 77 years is, they plan in secret, they come into the municipalities about 60% done and say, "Hurry up and sign this partnership agreement, we need you, we need you, you need to tell us what to do or else." Well, that's because they have a statutory requirement to get an agreement with the city to come into your roads. And the reason why no one ever knows about this is because no one ever writes about it and no one ever puts it down in history. And so when they come back and slaughter another city 10 years after the last one, no one remembers. And now people are going to remember, because Pikeoff OTA and the Oklahomans for Responsible Transportation are making it our mission to write down everything about the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority so that municipalities from here on out know exactly what's going on. And so the statute 69, Section 1716, requires the OTA to partner with cities before the project can start. And I guess you can think about it this way. Why would the 12 big consultants that work for the OTA be contacting the mayor and the councilpeople and the staff and telling them to sign a dinky little resolution from the city of Norman? They don't even live here. They live in Oklahoma City, Edmund. Why do they care about what the city of Norman does? They care because if you don't sign that resolution, the OTA can't come in. It's law. And so I applaud you for understanding that and standing tall the first time in Oklahoma history that a city has told the OTA no. And I hope your votes are no. And I know you know this, but I want to say this for everyone's benefit. We know that the city staff knew about this back in 2022. We have proof. We have the emails. We know that they knew the right away. We know that they knew the routes. So there's no way that the city council right now has to do anything with the OTA. They're going to build it. They try to come in, we can take them to court and let the citizens fight this and the city get behind the citizens because I think that the city of Norman is going to be the first, first city in Oklahoma history to stop the OTA. Thank you.
This is... Uh, yes.
For this item, sir.
This is a lot, a lot of support. There's no way that we can overlook this number of people, this amount of, this size of an effort. You don't see this very often, especially behind a single, such a single and focused issue. But yeah, I'm sitting here as a steward of our community, as someone like you, who cherishes the land that we live on, the water that sustains us. You know, we're gathered here not just to discuss the turnpike, but to talk about something far more important, it's our water, our lifeblood, the very essence of what makes this land our home. Lake Thunderbird is not just a body of water, it's the source of our drinking water, it's the sustenance for our crops, the foundation of our way of life. And, you know, but now this vital resource is under threat from a proposed turnpike that would cut through its watershed, bring with it the risk of pollution and destruction. The Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, the OTA is expecting us to roll over and accept their terms, threatening us with exclusion from the decision-making process if we don't comply. And let me ask you and... And let me ask you and council this, when has yielding to bullies ever protected what we hold dear? When has surrounding our principles ever, or surrendering our principles ever led to a better outcome? The OTA wants us to believe that their project is inevitable, that resistance is futile. They sow the seeds of doubt, of hopelessness, because they know that a divided, disheartened community is easier to control. But I say to you, that inevitability only exists if we allow it to take root in our hearts. And we've seen what happens when communities give in to these tactics. Oklahoma County, Harrah Berryhill, Jenks, and others were promised a seat at the table and only to be left out in the cold footing the bill for a project they had no real say in. That same fate awaits us if we don't stand firm. But there is a way forward in a way that honors our duty to protect our water and our homes and our future. And now, this whole resolution situation, it's been, it's been a roller coaster, to say the least, going from one to the other. You know, initially I drafted a resolution that stands up to the OTA's demands, a resolution that says, "Yes, we value progress, but not at the cost of our water, our health, or our land." That resolution demands that the OTA conduct proper environmental impact studies, explore alternative routes and include us, truly includes us in the process. Some may call it a bold move and some may say it's risky to challenge the OTA, but what's truly risky is allowing them to steamroll over our rights and our environment and our future. What's bold is standing up for what we know is right, even when it's difficult. And I want to urge my colleagues on council that we can embrace this moment, we're not just passing or rejecting a resolution, we're making a statement about who we are as a community. We're saying that we will not be coerced into sacrificing our most precious resource. We're standing with our farmers and our families and the future generations. And to those who fear that resistance is futile, I say this, the only inevitability is that which we create through inaction. By standing together, by demanding accountability and transparency, we can protect our water and our way of life. And this is not just a fight for Lake Thunderbird, it's a fight for every Oklahoman who believes in the right to clean water, the sanctity of our environment, and the power of a united community. You know, let's stand firm as a city and as a council, with courage and conviction to show the OTA and the world that we will not be intimidated, will not be silenced, and will not give up the fight for our water, our land, or our future. And a few weeks ago, I saw that we had a study session coming up to discuss infrastructure needs of the turnpike and I thought, oh crap, it's time to see if we can cut this thing off and at least put some kind of protections, demand some protections in place because we don't have a resolution that makes our position clear on what our expectations are in the preservation of our watershed and our floodplains. And in fact, I think it was either Randy Carter or Dave Moore, at the beginning, before the meeting had started on the TV back there, we had the first slide of a PowerPoint presentation that said, "Discussion of the OTA Resolution." I thought, awesome, that resolution that I sent out, looks like we're going to be talking about it. Well, I was very surprised to learn that that's definitely not the resolution that that PowerPoint or that slide had referred to. It was instead a demand from the OTA that we pass a resolution that declares our love for them and this turnpike. And so, you know, I had, we had my resolution, we had this OTA grovelling, "We love you" resolution. At the end of that, the direction to hybridize the two. After some back and forth, a few weeks, we came up with one then another final version of that, that resolution. Ultimately, that's the resolution that's on tonight's agenda. It is my intent to make a motion to amend that resolution, to strike all of its contents and replace it with my original resolution. But, and then leaving it up to the public comment to kind of get an idea, is this what Ward 5 wants, is this, was this the right move? Because, you know, we're, we have the benefit of the intelligence of the community as a group and not just as individuals. And I myself don't always catch these small details. For example, in the staff report, the OTA has requested that the Norman City Council pass a resolution to present the city's requests and expectations of the OTA for any future coordination and construction on the east-west connector and the south extension. First pass reading that, I think, well, my original one is, there's no request, we don't really want anything from the devil, we just have this list of expectations on how they're going to conduct proper studies. But then, now that we think about it, could that be considered as consent? That we're acknowledging that their project and validating it thereby, you know, just by the mere fact of telling them we have expectations if it were to happen? Wow. I am sincerely grateful that so many people from the community came up and went and spoke one by one, because I wouldn't have caught that until hearing it so many times. So, excited that we get to reject this today. But the last four weeks was not in vain. You know, had we just had that one study session where all we had to go with was the "we love you" resolution, I don't know how much of this discussion would have actually come out of that. Now, one of the problems with the resolution I initially proposed, and even the hybrid one, is that there's no real teeth with it. You know, we can make all these expectations of how they're going to do proper studies to ensure that they're not going to, you know, irrevocably damage our water supply. But there's nothing that really enforces that. There's nothing that really gives us the hope of having an outcome that we control. No. It's difficult to find a way to gain that upper hand and to actually have positive control over this chessboard that the OTA has thrown in front of us. My hopes is that, and perhaps everything is a long shot, but my hopes is the resolution that comes on the next item that declares the moratorium on large projects, in anticipation of an ordinance that, well, I'll describe it a little bit more once we get to it, that could provide the teeth that we need to have some kind of, for the first time, a positive control and the power to guide the direction this is going. But I just want to thank everybody for coming here. The outcome would have, could have been different had the community not come up here and voiced their opinions and their concerns. And this is the kind of involvement that we need as a community to be a stronger community.
Councilmember Ball?
Okay. Okay. I know I've talked to many of you, I've received numerous, numerous emails, and I'm very forthcoming about where my stance was. A couple of weeks ago, I told you my concerns and my issues. We've had study sessions and we've got to where we are today. Councilman Nash put in hours, I don't know how many hours he put in writing all these amendments and everything else. And I was really willing to work with Councilman Nash to get these amendments in here and, you know, to work together, because that's what we do. We compromise, we find a way that's going to work with everybody, and we try to pass something that's going to make everybody happy. Daryl or Rick, the 2022 resolution that was passed by council, was it basically the same as far as a city design welcome or endorse the intrusion of the turnpikes built by the OTA? In Daryl's defense, what he does up there, a lot of times when he's not looking at you, is because we're getting information from you guys and I'm asking Rick for court citations. I'm asking Daryl for, can you see me this resolution so I can look this up real quick so I have the information that I need right now to make an informed decision. So I just wanted to give them a little bit of defense up there. But, so what, the 2020 resolution, can you kind of just go over it very briefly?
And just to, we heard the date, February of 2022, and it was a public announcement by the Turnpike Authority and they rolled out the $5 billion plan. And staff's goal was to get them in front of the council in this chamber to tell the public in Norman what that entailed. So it was either March or May of 2022 that we brought in the OTA to present that information to the city council in a public forum. And from that meeting, the city council drafted the resolution that came shortly thereafter. So Rick's got it pulled up on his iPad.
Well, there are a number of whereas clauses with regard to that resolution that talk about the history of that particular project. There are some whereas clauses that talk about the issue with regard to Lake Thunderbird. I think the operative language in this particular resolution, it's going to be paragraphs or sections 22, 23, and 24. 22 says that the OTA should conduct extensive study of its proposed construction and its impact on the Lake Thunderbird watershed prior to moving forward on any plans for construction and share the results of such study publicly with the city of Norman, that insufficient information exists to support the construction of the Kickapoo Turnpike extension through the rural areas of Norman. And then finally, that without this information, the city of Norman opposes the construction of all aspects of the assets of Oklahoma that are proposed to occur within Norman, including construction of the Outer Loop and the extension of the Kickapoo Turnpike south through Norman and connecting to I-35 south of Goldspeed. So those, that was the therefore would be resolved portion of that resolution that was passed in March of 2022.
And did the OTA do any of those things?
Here's my understanding, and it's probably, my understanding is, number one, the OTA board's approval of the south extension, the bonds for that, was conditioned upon them doing an environmental study. So a condition of OTA moving forward with the bonds for this project was the conducting of an environmental study. My understanding is that they're not finished with that study yet, so that's probably why we don't have it.
Okay. So, so we passed a resolution requesting information.
Correct.
We are two years down the road, we still do not have that from them, which basically tells me that our last resolution was pointless, that we passed because they ignored it, which tells me that this resolution right here is pointless. And like you said, Rick, this is, this is our opinion that we want to be protected. Well, no, pardon my language, I won't say it, but of course we want to be protected. And the only thing on this resolution that makes any sense to me is the city of Norman does not welcome or endorse the intrusion of the turnpike built by the OTA into our community. And I thank the young man that came up with the sister and spoke. Is there anybody here from the OTA that wants to come up and speak? I'll yield a few minutes. Is there any other citizens that would like to come up and speak on behalf of the OTA? Is there anybody in this room that supports the OTA in any way? So what we're holding here is a completely pointless piece of paper, and that's what we do.
Councilmember Grant?
Yeah, okay.
We finished the public comment?
And I was signed up.
What is your name?
But my name wasn't called.
What's your name?
And most everything has been covered, except for the fact that if the state of Oklahoma did not have the law of eminent domain, we all need to get ahold of our legislators, tell them, "Dear residents, there's 13 states don't have that." And without that, there is no way that OEA could have come in here. So that acts right? Now, the second item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ma'am, you're...
In order to belong or to be a citizen in the United States, anybody coming into this country has to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And it's been shown here that one member of our city council thinks that she can sit with her back to the flag because of religious differences.
Points of order.
If the city council and she is not intelligent enough to totally two words out under God that none of you belong on this city council, I want to see a verse or two, a verse or two, any whether it's of many of them who will allow...
Ma'am, thank you. Councilmember Grant?
Yes. I want to thank you all for coming out to speak tonight and share your stories, especially to our electeds who came to speak, because that's usually something we don't see. And they felt so strongly to come and tell us what they plan to do to help us in the future. I ran in '22, and you may not know this, but I was with you at a crosspoint at that first town hall. You can go to my website where I had a statement about turnpikes there. I was asked early on in the week, it's only Tuesday, but early on, if I had decided which way I was going to vote on this, and I said, "No," I was undecided. So to state Senator Mary Boren, yes, some of us were on the fence. You know, because part of the process is taking in information all the way through up until you vote. And I did say to my constituents that asked where I was on this, that you would hear me forecast what I would say tonight before we voted. I think it's an easy yes to reject. I will say, I hope in hearing everybody's concerns for housing and stormwater, that when the core has issues with stormwater and maybe we'll get to a place where we all can support stormwater utility fee or figure out what to do with our unhoused population and people who are struggling to stay housed right now, that you carry that level of empathy over into these other struggles, because I think all our struggles are connected. I heard some things tonight and I really appreciate the people that got the open records that concerned me and that I did not know about. And I will be curious to dig into that more. I will say this to wrap it up, whatever comes moving forward, I think, this is just me thinking, that you probably do have the support of city council to continue to fight this fight. And so I'll be interested to see where we end up from not only the municipality side but all the way up to the state. So, thank you.
Councilmember Montoya?
No, ma'am, you'd be out of order. This is a time for the council to be able to make their comments.
I wanted to clarify with our city manager that he was paying attention as he's...
He is, he, he...
I'm looking at my audience looking at me and he hasn't looked up on top.
He's been working. Councilmember Montoya?
I received a lot of emails, a lot of them, and I read every single one of them, but I might not have the opportunity to respond to all of them. But one of them asked me this following question. Where do you get the information that your constituents are against the turnpike? And my answer is from the overwhelming amount of emails and calls from my constituents and the city of Norman, the citizens of Norman. I was elected to represent my ward, represent the better interests of the city, and all of the citizens of Norman. And as such, in this role, my constituents oppose the turnpike, the citizens of Norman oppose the turnpike, and I thank all of you for showing up and speaking and sharing your stories with us tonight. I was going to read the resolution that was passed back in March of 2022, but our city attorney did that job for me. And I will leave this with a quote from Marcus Aurelius, The Last Good Emperor, from Meditations 9.1. Injustice is a kind of blasphemy. Nature designed rational beings for each other's sake to help not harm one another as they deserve. To transgress against the will then is to blaspheme against the oldest of the gods. I stand with my ward and I stand with the citizens of Norman.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. And again, thank you all for being here and being willing to get up at that podium and express yourself to us. It's not easy to do that. And it inspires me personally, and I think the show of support that you all have brought here helps us make bold decisions like this, to say no and feel that the public has our back if we do it. So I know what it's like to lose your home and watch it be demolished. It wasn't the remnant domain, but two years ago this month, the house I'd lived in for 11 years on College Street. It wasn't for sale, but the owner was offered, made an offer that she couldn't refuse and texted me while I was here during a meeting and said, hey, Stephen, I'm sorry, but I've got to sell the house. And if in 24 hours you can match the offer that was made, I'll sell it to you. And I called some people, but I could not come up with that much money in cash in 24 hours. And I was given a few months to find another place and move. But it was the longest I'd ever lived anywhere in my life. I've lived in Norman almost my entire life, but I lived in apartments with my dad and we moved around a little bit. And so this was a place I wanted to stay. I'd hoped to be able to purchase it one day and fix it up and all that. But on the day it was torn down, I went and watched and filmed it and took pictures. Today, that, where it was is just an empty dirt lot. Nothing's even been built in its place. And I had to move and I had to stay in Ward Seven, obviously, to continue representing my ward. And it was very difficult to find a place to live in my ward that was even remotely affordable. We were fortunate, we were able to find a place on, near campus, but it was almost exactly double the rent that I'd been paying the previous 11 years. It didn't have, it doesn't have a big front porch like my old house did. And I'm thankful to have it, but it's just not the same. So I know what it's like, and I have an idea about what you all feel. And it's been, the thoughts I've had since this was first announced is, what is going to happen to all of these people that would be in the path? Where would they go? Where in Norman could they move to? And if they live out in the country and you've got five acres, where are you going to find five acres for the same value that OTA might give you? Not in Norman, exactly. You're going to have to move to some small town far away. Norman's my hometown, and yes, I've mostly always lived around the campus area. But one of the things I've always loved about our city is the urban and rural mix. And I know sometimes that, you know, there's a history of contention between rural Norman and urban Norman, but it's really one of the things that makes our community different than other places, and it's one of the things that makes us better, I think. I love being right here in downtown Norman, and in five to 10 minutes, I can be out in the country, away from the whole city, surrounded by nature, and can forget about what's going on here for a few minutes. I've served on the council for 11 years, and during that time, I've served as the chair of the city council transportation committee under three different mayors, under Mayor Miller, Mayor Clark, and Mayor Heikla. And transportation is something I've always been interested in. I loved playing with Hot Wheels and stuff when I was a kid. I had a Lego town in my room when I was a kid that took up the entire floor, and I slept on the couch, actually, because there wasn't room for a bed in there. All I ever wanted was Lego sets as a kid. So transportation and how people move around and population census data and things like that, and how cities grow over time is something I've always really found fascinating. And it's one of the main reasons that I became interested in city council meetings when I was in middle school and watching them on TV on Channel 20 back when I had cable. And so I was real fascinated by the presentations for developments or blueprints for a project or a new street that was going to get fixed up or something like that. And so it's always been a primary interest of me, of mine. But as chair of the transportation committee, my first knowledge of this proposed turnpike was that day in February when I saw former council member Richard Tortorello post it on his Facebook page. And he posted the access plan, and I thought, wow, how have we never heard of this? And why is the first time I'm seeing it on a Facebook post? You know? And that's just kind of how this has started. I remember the meeting at the church. I drove out there, and I remember seeing a line of headlights stretching down Highway Nine for as far as you could see, people trying to turn into, onto 24th and go to the church. And I see people, like one of my former high school English teachers, Ms. Rutledge, in the audience there. I don't know if I was the greatest student. I doubt she remembers me very well. But, but thinking about her family being impacted this, by this, I have two classmates that live in rural Norman, that we graduated Norman High 20 years ago this year. They've been together since we were in high school, and they have a family, and their property could be impacted by this. So although Ward Seven is not impacted directly by the turnpike, my house isn't impacted by it or any property that I own, people I care about are impacted by this. And, and my thoughts previously on the resolution was, well, if this is a done deal, we've got to try to get, we've got to try to get some concessions to the city of Norman. If this is going to be built, we need to make sure that certain things are taken care of. And I think that's the balance of a decision that all of us have up here is, how do we weigh the impact to the people with the future of the city should this go through? And sometimes I've been criticized over the years for people not always being, being able to predict exactly how I'm going to vote on something. But it's, has a lot to do with the fact that often I have a pretty good idea, and there are things where I'm, I know pretty well beforehand, but I've always been able to be swayed by public comment. And I've always felt it was important that we all listen to the people that come down here to City Hall and are willing to get up at that podium and give us their opinion. And so, given what we've seen tonight, and given the fact that nobody in Ward Seven has reached out to me at all to express support for the OTA or a resolution, it's been overwhelmingly no. I had my email count whittled down pretty well, under, under 100 a few weeks ago, and now it's over 400. I've been looking through them, but I, I read them and then I put it back on unread so I know to go back and respond. But it is, it's overwhelming, and some may think it's a vocal minority in Norman. I don't think so. I think for two solid years going on three, it's been a very vocal majority of people in the city, all across the city, that do not support this. And given all of those circumstances, I'm not going to support a resolution, and I'm going to continue to explore any option and support any option that will put the full power of the city of Norman behind the people as we continue to fight this and tell the OTA we don't want it.
Councilmember Henkel?
So I've been a city council person for about an eighth of the time that council member Holman has. But in my two months, it's been a very interesting trial by fire, to say the least. And looking out into the audience and seeing friends and family and neighbors that are impacted by this, I don't know how I could ever vote for something that's going to displace somebody from their home. I say that, I say that and also want to say that I don't want to stand in the way of development, but I'm not, I also want to enter development partnerships as truly a partnership to where I'm not feeling mobbed into doing something that our citizens don't want, that could potentially displace so many people and have such a magnificent negative impact on so many lives in our town. So I'm happy to, to be a part of motioning, motioning to reject this resolution tonight, and I will continue that.
Councilmember Pika?
Thank you. So as a former council member Foreman alluded to earlier, there is only herself, myself, Councilmember Holman, that were part of the original 2022 resolution. And I just want to reiterate, reiterate that in those two years since we passed that resolution, nothing has changed, and we still stand with you, standing in opposition to turnpike. And as far as I'm concerned, that resolution is still in effect. So thank you.
All right. The motion on the floor is to reject the resolution. Councilmembers?
I'll just remind you, a yes vote is for rejection.
Yes. Councilmembers, with that in mind, you may pass, cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to reject passes unanimously.
Counsel, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One. (pause) (inaudible) Council, we're going to take a break for 10 minutes. If you'd please be back at 9:21. One.[1231.31][1231.31][S02. (pause)[1233.31][1233.31][S02. (inaudible)[1235.31][1235.31][S02. (inaudible)[1237.31][1237.31][S02. (inaudible)[1239.31][1239.31][S02. (inaudible)[1241.31][1241.31][S02. (inaudible)[1243.31][1243.31][S02. (inaudible)[1245.31][1245.31][S02. (inaudible)[1247.31][1247.31][S02. (inaudible)[1249.31][1249.31][S02. (inaudible)[1251.31][1251.31][S02. (inaudible)[1253.31][1253.31][S02. (inaudible)[1255.31][1255.31][S02. (inaudible)[1257.31][1257.31][S02. (inaudible)[1259.31][1259.31][S02. (inaudible)[1261.31][1261.31][S02. (inaudible)[1263.31][1263.31][S02. (inaudible)[1265.31][1265.31][S02. (inaudible)[1267.31][1267.31][S02. (inaudible)[1269.31][1269.31][S02. (inaudible)[1271.31][1271.31][S02. (inaudible)[1273.31][1273.31][S02. (inaudible)[1275.31][1275.31][S02. (inaudible)[1277.31][1277.31][S02. (inaudible)[1279.31][1279.31][S02. (inaudible)[1281.31][1281.31][S02. (inaudible)[1283.31][1283.31][S02. (inaudible)[1285.31][1285.31][S02. (inaudible)[1287.31][1287.31][S02. (inaudible) Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah. So I think councilmember Nash definitely has an idea worth exploring here. And, you know, like every piece of policy that we put forward, it starts in a committee. And so we've determined that the community planning and transportation committee is the right fit for this one. And so we're recommending that we put it back to that committee and start the process like we normally would with any piece of policy. So I'm going to support a postponement tonight.
Councilmember Grant?
Uh, yes. I said in our council conference earlier that I was concerned about not using our regular process and not setting ourselves up for success and potential challenges in the future. So I will be supporting this postponement.
And Clark, this is an opportunity for persons in the public to comment on this.
And I have to... I saw this on the agenda. I think it's a great idea. I think the Turnpike Authorities project came in. It was this mega project and it kind of caught everybody off guard. Nobody expected it to come. But we didn't have a plan in place. And so I just, I think this is a great idea. It's a great opportunity for you guys to sit down and try to come up with something that will put a plan in place for the next time a mega project comes in, so that everybody's not caught off guard and you kind of know what to do and you have, you know, something you can work from. So I just want to say thank you for putting that together and I look forward to what you guys come up with. So, thanks.
Now we're heading down the road that we really need to head here. This is going to be postponed, but I think we're talking about the same thing when we talked about Mr. Nash putting up the resolution and councilmembers talking about postponing the resolution. It's moving down a road toward a better, more vibrant set of ordinances. We've told you that the floodplain ordinance needs to be strengthened and clarified. Many cities have environmental reporting ordinances. We don't have to start from scratch. We have NEPA. We have examples from other cities. We have things to do like that. We can look at housing and displacement ordinances. Really, this is a time to think and be creative and think out of the box. And remember, 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 as I commented last time, this is not a state is superior to the municipality thing. This is a question of what is the municipal interest? Does the municipality have a compelling interest that outweighs that of the state? I would say in most instances, the City of Norman on these issues has a much more compelling interest than anything the OTA can throw up on the board. Any ordinance you pass, of course, you're going to risk, do we need to look and see if this has already been preempted? Because sometimes the state does that. You're also going to have to look, well, our legislative folks are going to have to go fight your ordinance, fight for your ordinance up at the state legislature. Because some dude who lobbies for the OTA is going to say, let's preempt this ordinance that the City of Norman just put in place to make it harder for us to put in turnpikes. Let's have at that. Let's have that discussion. Let's have that talk. Let's expose anyone who doesn't want to protect the people and the local governments for what they are. Undemocratic, autocratic. This is the chance, not by partnering with the OTA, but this is the chance for you to really transform your city. Housing, floodplains, fix stormwater once and for all, fix pollution once and for all. This is your opportunity. You're volunteers, but you're going to earn what little pay you get over the next few months. Thank you.
Dave Moore. And Amy Serrato, you'll follow Dave.
Well, I think now that we've kind of embraced the reality of what it would be to have a mammoth-sized project just beat Norman to pieces, that this resolution is a great idea. And if it turns in an ordinance, yes, table it, give Michael or whoever needs to be in charge of it, the, everything he needs to make it, everything that it can possibly But I think we need to do it with a grain of salt, realizing that not everything's okay already, you know? Not a whole lot of things have actually changed. I was really embarrassed when Councilman Ball brought up the fact that the OTA had never kept up any of the things that they were asked to be done in the 2022 resolution. And the city attorney just tried to deflect that and gloss over it. And so we need to realize that that's still the same kind of crap we're going to be dealing with. And let's deal with it properly.
Debbie Staltsman will follow Amy.
Hi, Amy Serrato, Ward 5. Again, thank you for that vote. Nine, nothing on that rejecting that resolution to partner with the OTA. And this moratorium resolution or ordinance, whatever it's going to turn into be, is really important. Because again, from the emails that we have from the city staff, you have to be really careful about who you are listening to and what's your, how you're getting your information. Because I'm going to tell you in all honesty, not to make anybody feel bad, you're not getting the truth from a lot of your city staff. And I have here a draft of a map that's been going back and forth between your city staff gleefully, with a 500-acre industrial site shown on Hog Creek.
Please stick to the topic that's at hand, and that would be that.
It is, that is. It's a mega, it's a mega project. And this is why we need an ordinance. We need, we need an ordinance that protects the city against these mega projects. We need, we need an ordinance that protects our city against pollution, against flooding and a stormwater. And we need the council to be really careful about the information they're getting from staff and realizing that these plans have been in place for mega projects and the turnpikes that the staff have known about for over two years. And so I applaud Michael Nash for putting together this ordinance on the moratorium, big projects for permitting. And I hope that your committee can move it through the process and we can get some more robust protections in place because developers and the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority are going to keep coming back at us. Because again, we are the only city and municipality in 77 years that had the guts to say no. And so I applaud you for that. And I hope that this resolution or ordinance can come to fruition. Thank you.
I accidentally skipped over Tiffany Stevens.
Hi, Tiffany Stevens, Ward 5. I wanted to just make a comment that my husband was watching online. He said there's over 300 people that were watching tonight. And so I wanted to just kind of let you know that, that there are a lot of people, not just the people that showed up here. And I thank you for... And I thank you for letting us speak and for just listening and for reading my long emails. But I, when, when OTA comes back and tries to fight you on what you're doing, I mean, I just wanted to read this Turnpike Enabling Act, and it, OS 691716B, some people have mentioned it, but "All counties, municipalities, and other political subdivisions and all public agencies and commissions of the State of Oklahoma," and it says, "Notwithstanding any contrary provision of law, so despite other laws, are hereby authorized and empowered to lease, lend, grant, or convey to the authority at its request upon such terms and conditions as the proper authorities such as counties, municipalities, other political subdivisions, or public agencies and commissions of the state may deem reasonable and fair any real property which may be necessary or convenient to the effectuation of the authorized purposes of the authority, including public roads and other real property already devoted to public use." So this law basically says that they have to work with us and that notwithstanding, despite any other provisions of law. And so they still have to follow our laws. And so I think passing this, you know, ordinances that are more strict for mega projects is a great idea. And I just want to thank you for everything you're doing. I've been really astonished by the amount of corruption I have seen uncovered by the OTA, and I'm very sad to see that in my home state. And I meant what I said when I said I think good people like you is what we need to fight corruption in our government. So thank you.
Is Debbie Staltsman still here? Okay, Cynthia Rogers. Mayimy, you will follow Cynthia.
Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four, still. I really applaud this, this action. I wish we knew about this two years ago, so we could have actually been more ahead of this, I mean, the public, city council. I hope as we think about stormwater and stormwater runoff, my, my number-one thing is we look at rate of flow, but we don't look at volume of runoff, and volume really matters. So it's on my wish list. I approve this, and I also approve the delay, getting it right, going through process, dotting our i's, crossing our t's, also getting more input from our now-well-informed citizens about construction projects, OTA, that sort of thing. Thank you.
Cheryl Hoggatt, you will follow, Mayimy.
Hi, Mayimy Winler, Ward Two. So there's the whole thing about planting a tree, when is the best time, 10 years ago, but today is the next best time. So with this, you know, like Cynthia was saying, that, you know, two years ago, we could have started this up, but now is a great time also. So this is exciting, and I think it's going to be a good thing. Also, if you feel like there's a trap, there's a trap. That's it.
Pamela Post, you will follow Cheryl.
Lake Thunderbird was designated, oh, sorry, Cheryl Hoggatt, Ward Five. Lake Thunderbird was designated as a sensitive water supply by the State of Oklahoma in Specific concerns related to the excesses nutrient loading were total phosphorus, total nitrogen, dissolved oxygen, chlorophyll A, and turbidity. After 22 years, we're still on that list. Over the next decade, water quality continued to worsen. In 2010, Lake Thunderbird was placed on ODEQ's 303D list of impaired water bodies. Then we were, sorry, the DEQ established the total minimum daily load for nutrients and turbidity and the dissolved oxygen. Their ultimate recommendation was that the watershed control, or sorry, their ultimate recommendation was that the watershed-specific controls and be best, best management practices be chosen and put in use. This will be one of our watershed-specific controls. So I think it's time that we do something about it. I'm not saying that the city of Norman has not been doing the job to get off these lists or clean up our lakes or whatever, because I don't even know what the average amount of time it takes to do that. But I do know, when you have a fire, you don't add fuel to it. So we don't need to be adding fuel without protection from any mega project.
I got up off the floor again. Doing good. I'm Pam Post, and y'all still know I'm from Ward Five. I've recently been told that decisions shouldn't be a tally of yeses and nos, but the understanding of why a person wants you to vote a certain way, and I agree with that ideology. To me, this method allows you to make an informed and unbiased decision, allowing yourself to understand their motivation, their motivations will lead you through to a thorough and complete thought process. I am thrilled with how you all voted and handled tonight and that you all listened. I, I am, excuse me, am amazed at the work that you all did. Sometimes in life comes the time to step back, take a moment, look around, and change the course of action. I have read this totally new resolution and said, wow, there are councilmembers who realize that for Norman to move forward while protecting itself from outside predators, there is a need for change. The moratorium proposed in this resolution allows council to take that much-needed step back. Development will happen, but it needs to be done using the best practices available. This resolution gives council the time to look around and find the best possible means, and then the opportunity to implement the necessary changes that will allow the best growth in Norman. Councilmembers, I am encouraged that you are looking at this resolution enough to form a study committee. A thorough look at the proposal will give you the basis for improving city ordinances: ordinances not based on the emotions of people, ordinances not based on the demands of special interests, ordinances not based on a tally sheet of yes or no, ordinances that are based on facts and what is best for Norman and its citizens. You have been elected for that reason. And I want you to know that as you all prepare these ordinances, and as, as Rob Norman has said, you're going to get, they're going to get attacked at the Capitol, that myself and Randy Carter are the two lead people who go to the Capitol and talk to our legislators. And as you prepare these ordinances, we are going to take them, and with the backing of the information given to us by Amy Serrato, Kelly Wilson, Tassie Hirschfield, and everybody else in Oklahoma for responsible transportation, we're going to make sure that your ordinances, to the best of our ability, will stand up and pass mustard with our state and the state laws and everything. So thank you so much for going this direction. We appreciate your help.
Leslie Noble will follow.
I'll be very brief. It's late, we're tired. Thank you very much for respecting our voices and making, in my opinion, the best decision that's been made all year. Regarding the other resolution, I think it's a brilliant idea. I absolutely support it, and I also support your decision to take your time and make sure that it's right. So in that context, I will encourage you also to consider that part of what is driving the OTA's ferocious attack on Norman is the rapid appreciation of our real estate, especially in Ward Five, that people's trouble finding housing is a supply-and-demand issue, and there are developers who want to be able to maximize that appreciation by grabbing the land themselves. And so if they can't do it on a big mega project, they will very likely continue to look for ways to do it in a thousand smaller projects. And so I would encourage you to protect people's homes, their farms, their home equity, and the investment that they've already made in their properties as part of this process. So thank you.
Wesley Noble, Ward Three. I am in favor of the moratorium, and as someone who lives in Ward Three, I, I am personally most concerned about the 10-mile flats, and I hope that there can be some, some more work done on understanding how, if there's more development in that area, how it might cause flooding. Thank you.
Jesse Matlock. Paul Wilson will follow.
Jesse Matlock, Ward Five. I really want to thank you all for supporting the democratic process, for listening to your constituents, brought a little bit of faith back in my city leaders. I'll keep it brief as well. I do support the forward-thinking that is looking at what major projects might bring to our community and how they can affect it and how they influence it. So I appreciate the, that resolution and also taking the time to think about it. Thank you.
Well, it's been a minute. Paul Wilson, Ward One. I want to thank you guys for voting against the OTA earlier, even though it won't even affect me at all. I am definitely against it. Now, this moratorium is a great idea. I read the resolution that was on the amended agenda packet online, and I agreed with almost every single bit of it that I read. There are some other moratoriums that I've brought before that I think that we could actually look at too around housing, but I definitely support you guys postponing this to get it right. So, thank you, guys.
Randy Carter. Okay, Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I hate to be the parliamentary geek, but I'm a little bit unclear on what the motion is on the floor right now. In Robert's Rules, there are sort of two kinds of postponement motions. One is basically tabling a resolution, which means that the council doesn't intend to act on it. That's postponement without a date certain. Otherwise, you can do postponement on a date certain, which guarantees that something will happen. I want to suggest, and maybe this can be done via amendment, that the council either postpone or amend the resolution, or amend the motion on the floor to turn it into a postponement with a date certain, or that you amend the motion on the floor in order to turn it into an amendment of this resolution that basically puts it in a broader context that says, the city council is looking for an ordinance that does something along these lines. We don't have the ordinance yet, but this is the kind of thing we're looking for, because that actually commits you to doing something rather than potentially walking away from it. Second point, since I have a second. I love this resolution. I think the city does need to think about large projects that have high potential to impact what's going on in the city, but I think we should also consider the possibility that there are projects that impact the city in very important ways just because of their large fiscal impact. So I think you should probably add to the list of criteria that you have to meet three to count as a large policy or a large development. What was the terminology there? Anyway, that you add to that list to include a sufficiently large fiscal impact and that you include in the, the sort of solutions part of this ordinance that you're thinking about fiscal impact statements for those large kinds of issues, because I think that would be really revealing. One of the things that I think is interesting about the OTA thing, but I think other policies that happen in Norman, is that they're pretty narrowly tailored to benefit one, you know, relatively well-to-do community already. And as my councilmember Helen Grant noted before, a lot of these things are actually interrelated, right? There are a lot of policies that get adopted in Norman that happen for a certain kind of reason. If we're going to think about how to do better policy, I think you guys need to get something that's an actual commitment tonight rather than just tabling this thing. And once you get the commitment, you'll have some idea of what you need to talk about if you sort of go the resolution route. So that's my suggestion.
Hello, Luigi Pallavani, Ward Four. We took a stance, we took a great stance. City Council stood with the people of Norman rather than developer for once, and we have a chance to take a step further. Stop big, for a minute, stop big projects, stop this grab of the land, of making things worse for everyone but whoever is building those monstrosities around town. I would say that you can approve this today and make it better tomorrow. I don't know what's the best process to go about things, but I would love to see another stake being put in the ground tonight. Thank you.
My name is Adrian Gauthier, and I'm in Ward Four, and I'm also representing the Red Earth Group Sierra Club, and that's our chair back there, Heather Siffany, but she didn't sign up in time to talk. So, thank you for your vote for, I can't remember the positive and negative, but you did the right thing. So, and also thank you for postponing this resolution. We are very excited about it, and we appreciate Nash for bringing it up. We just found out about it this afternoon, but what we do know is that passing this Resolution 38 is definitely in the best interest of Norman. So after it all gets fleshed out, we'll be encouraging you to all vote yes for it. Norman needs strong ordinances for any large developments, especially those projects in our floodplains and on the near and on or near our already impaired streams and creeks. The DEQ has classified quite a few streams and creeks as impaired, and we need to protect those. We also want to make sure that developers are not banking on additional highways and corridors to literally pave the way for their mega projects. We are just finding out today that some projects near Lake Thunderbird are already in the planning stages. This is nuts. The Sierra Club cannot stress enough how important it is to protect our drinking water and our watershed. We strongly support a temporary moratorium on permits for any mega development that might compromise this. We also strongly support the city to strengthen its stormwater and floodplain ordinances. Also, the Sierra Club also has a presence, like PICO, the TA, at the Capitol during legislative session, and we will have your back there. In closing, we need this resolution to protect our citizens, watersheds, and land from unnecessary projects. Please vote yes, and please continue to work hard on this, and I really appreciate y'all's service to Norman. I feel like this is practically a volunteer job, and I know it's hard to, to fight the good fight, but y'all did that tonight. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel.
Me?
No. Yeah, we're not to miscellaneous discussion. Evan, you will follow Cheryl Ann.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel, Wards Four and Six. I have property in. I, I want to just, again, implore you to really think hard about every single large project that is presented to council. It is, I come from a very diverse, very overpopulated place, and recently was traveling back there and have found that citizens quite a few years ago banded together and kept super projects from going in places that I enjoyed as a child, wooded areas that are now on the National Register of Places to Go and Be on Staten Island, New York. So if we get it right here, it, it will be very impactful to generations if we can keep Norman's green green spaces green, and our waters clean, and our air less polluted by whatever industry is coming down the pike. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, I love innovative democracy, and this is innovative democracy.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly clarify the parliamentary procedure question that Mr. Ellis posed. It's my understanding that a resolution doesn't require a date certain, that's only an ordinance. Is that correct?
Well, not necessarily. Any item can, nothing requires a date certain, okay? Regardless of the type of item. He is correct in that a motion to postpone without a date certain can be seen as just a motion to reject. It dies at that point. But you also want to make sure you give your, I understand why you didn't do a date certain because you don't know how long it's going to take to get all this done. So that's another, if you do a date certain and you're not ready yet, it still has to come back to that agenda because you postponed it to that date.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I just, I bring this up because, you know, in brief conversation earlier, I let Council Member Nash know that a postponement might be coming. And so I'm making this motion in good faith. I'm committed to actually seeing this through, and so I'm on the record letting everybody know that this is done in good faith. So, thank you.
Discuss that it would go to the CPTC. And not necessarily, it depends on what the chair wants to do with it, is the next time that he hears it, but that I would assume would be quick. So, Councilmember Ball.
I'm also in favor of postponing this. I'm not the biggest fan, having read the ordinance. I think any, or having read the resolution, I think any resolution that automatically prohibits every and any project is too broad. I think we could be limiting ourselves on attracting who knows what to the city. But from July, having this go until July 1st, 2025, or until the enactment of a new ordinance, if we want an ordinance, then I say we go straight to the ordinance. I don't think we should waste our time with a resolution. But yeah, that's where I'm at. I just think it's overbroad. I think it does need some work, and we're willing to work on it and see what we can make happen, so.
Councilmember Nash?
Clarify two points. One is that it's not a moratorium on all building permits, just projects that are gigantic in scale, meeting these criteria, three of these criteria. Second is that nobody needs to worry that I want to let this council forget about this ordinance or this resolution. So, that's it.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, and I plan to support the postponement as well. But as Chair of the CPTC Committee, the Community Playing in Transportation Committee, I definitely, I think it's an idea worth exploring. As many of you have noted, I think the council agrees, and I'm definitely willing to take it up in our next meeting, which would be September 26th at 4:00 PM. And in that meeting, we can hash out whether it's a resolution, an ordinance. We can get, give staffs a little more time to research any legal issues. We can discuss those and hash those out. Whatever other, you know, any time we write an ordinance or resolution, I've seen it many times where we've went over it, and we thought we had it correct, and then we pass it, and then, you know, it's enacted, and then something comes up that we didn't think of, and it's like, oh, well, that was an unintended consequence of that. And so I think it'd be good for us to start that conversation and hash those details out so that if we do end up passing an ordinance that it is, like as others have mentioned, has actual, I don't know about teeth behind it, but that it has substance behind it that it really would mean something. So, yeah, I commit to put that on the agenda for the 26th at our next meeting and see where it goes from there.
So I don't need to worry about amending. No other comments from Council? Councilmember Montoya? Oh, okay, I just saw you hit your.
You was asleep.
It was asleep. Okay. The motion on the floor is to postpone the resolution. Councilmembers, you can cast your vote. Boy, have you.
Our votes have been cast. The resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. And so this is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we do. Ben Plummer, I'm assuming still isn't here. Kelly Wilson.
Just wanted to say thank you again for standing behind your citizens on the turnpike issue. And I know that there have been members of the community, a small group of members of the community, that actually do support the turnpike, probably the economic development crowd. But I want you to take note, as Councilmember Ball mentioned earlier, that they didn't show up, but all of these people did. And they're just a small, small fraction of the people that would have been here if they could have been here. And I just also wanted to point out the fact that the people who supposedly are in support of this turnpike, they're the ones who don't like Norman. They're the ones who don't like what we have already. These people love Norman. They love what we already have here. They don't want to see that change. I'm not saying they don't want to see development, or that they don't want to see, you know, betterment in the future, but they want to see it done right so that we still can preserve the parts of Norman that we all love. And I hope that that came clear tonight, that that's why these people are here, because we love our city and we feel like it's worth fighting for. And I want you guys to know that, sorry, I'm getting emotional, but I've spent so much time doing research, trying to find answers for you guys and for these people, because it matters. And I just hope that that doesn't go overlooked. I hope that you guys understand that we do know what we're talking about and that we have done our homework and some other people have not. And I just want to make sure that you guys are asking your staff to give you straight answers, to get to the bottom of things, because sometimes I think they're not. And I know everybody wants the Kilpatrick. That's what the Turnpike Authority holds over your head all the time. But I want you to know that my son is a junior in college, and he created a three-hole golf course on our 16-acre piece of land. And a lot of that will be taken for a multimodal path and these mitigation ponds. And that's just heartbreaking to me because I've seen the hours that he's put in. My husband takes him to the farm in Medford, back where our in-laws live, and he'll take five-gallon buckets, and he will scoop up sand, and then he will bring it home, and he will put it in his sand pits for his golf course. So while I know everybody wants Topgolf up there on Indian Hills, I'm letting you know right now, we already got it. All my friends right here, you guys are my friends, too, come on over. We'll play golf together. That's what my kid does when he was in high school. That's what his friends would do. Instead of running around on the back roads, he would have his friends come over, and they would have, they would play, you know, frisbee golf or golf in our yard. And, you know, I mean, that's something that's worth preserving. And anyway, I just want you to know that we support you and we're thankful that you support us. So, thank you.
Rob Norman. Rick Sandag will follow Rob. Okay.
Well, let's not forget that we maybe had a watershed night tonight. That, yes, we turned back unaccountable autocracy. We won a victory for rights-based democracy. But let's not forget that. This is a watershed night that goes well beyond just an issue of a turnpike. It can help transform our city and move us forward in the next few weeks, the next few months, the next few years. I always like to tell this joke about these turnpikes in a nice little moment. Of all the things they failed to do in knowing, doing no due diligence, doing no planning, and not understanding what they were getting themselves into, they forgot that for the first time in 77 years, they were running up against a bunch of people smarter than they were. And knew more about democracy, and knew more about rights, and knew more about transportation planning, and pollution, and stormwater, and things like that. We have a path to fix those things. And let's not forget some lessons learned. We need to think about our policies. We need to be able to discern between a good, cool, sight-to-see idea and whether that idea is put together correctly, whether that idea is put together financially right, whether that idea is put together legally right, whether that idea is put together economically right. Are we rotting our core for turnpikes or yes arenas? A lot of these people who are here in this room, I hate to change the subject, but I get to in miscellaneous comments. A lot of people who are in this room, you need to start thinking and pondering. They're coming back the next two weeks. And guess what position they're going to take? I'll let you guess a little bit, and start to think about what your citizens really think about what you're going to be considering over the next two meetings. It again comes back to discerning between good and bad plans, discerning between trying to shove things down people's throats without thinking about it, and trying to abide by rights-based democracy and the rights and obligations you have toward all your people. So I will look forward to seeing you on turnpikes, arenas, homeless, housing, all sorts of things over the next two weeks and next few months.
Julie Sandag, okay. Marguerite Larson.
I just wanted to say thank you all for actually listening to your constituents and paying attention to what people are saying, and I hope you carry that forward in things that are coming up before you, that you take into consideration exactly what Rob said, what people want, what your constituents want, that you take care of, taking care of our water, that you make sure that we have green space, that you take care of our climate, that you're not knocking down trees just to put in pavement. So when developers come, maybe we should think about different ordinances to hold them more accountable instead of just one tree that that's all they're obligated for. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you again for sticking with us, supporting us. We will support you, but I am hoping that you actually carry this support forward. Thank you.
Amy Serato. And Darla LeBlanc will follow.
Amy Serato, Ward Five. Thank you again for your support, and I'd like to put out an invitation that if any of you ever want to go get coffee or tea, me or anybody in my group would be happy to sit and talk about things. We have lots of research that we've done. We have lots of facts, and we put it in ways that are easily understandable in graphics. And we don't seem to get as much time with elected officials and everybody that are, the lobbyists, the special interest groups do, because they do that for a full-time job, and we have full-time jobs and kids and all that. But we are really passionate, and we do love our city, and we love where we live, and we want to help you keep it that way. And we offer our services to you, so please do contact us at any time. Thank you so much.
Darla LeBlanc. No, hang on. Did Adrienne, I just want to see her, Adrienne Gauthier? Did I say that right? Gauthier? Okay, looks like she left. Tiffany Stevens.
Hi, Tiffany Stevens, Ward Five. I'm starving, so I just have one other thing I forgot to say. And that was that the group, Oklahoma Most Responsible Transportation, they are some of the most down-to-earth, honest, very intelligent people that I've ever worked with, and I'm very blessed to be a part of that group. And I just wanted to let you know that, that they're very honest and intelligent, and I would rely on them as much as you can. Thanks.
Eddie Saltzman. Salt, Saltzman, I'm sorry, just getting tired, getting done tight. Cynthia Rogers.
Still me, still Ward Four. I also want to thank you for the engagement that citizens were afforded tonight, and makes me feel proud of my city for all these good people showing up and learning from each other and helping all of us learn about the issue. Also, I wanted to echo what our good friend Rob Norman just said about discernment, and also point out some commonalities between what happened tonight and information that's going to come to light about what, say, city staff knew, things that were going on in the background, and what we're going to talk about next week at the first public hearing for the arena, TIF Four and Five. And I will say, there is some commonalities because, like the OTA stuff, there is research that's crucial for discernment and making good decisions that you haven't seen, that hasn't been in the staff reports, that hasn't even been suggested in the many, many studies that you've seen. There hasn't been a proper, what a professional economist would call, economic impact study done. And it is just amazing to me that we could have a project plan that's gone through a whole bunch of parts of the process. And I don't know that council said, hey, we want an arena. This is a good thing for us. This is a number-one issue, way for us to spend our tax dollars. And we haven't had an economic impact study that would properly show impacts on the city and cannibalization. And so it amazes me that that's as far as it is in the process with the level of information. And I've asked, I haven't seen, I know there's some word about an independent study of the studies, like we did that before. We found them lacking. I suspect we're going to find the same thing. And we do have citizen professionals in this town who know about these things because they study them. And I'm not just talking about myself. There are other professors at OU that study economic development and that understand these things. So discernment, let's listen to the experts, let's really make sure we're making decisions that are good for the community and not just things that special interests say, hey, do this, wouldn't this be great, and try to sell us on. Because I'm pretty sure an arena wouldn't be the top of the list of our needs in our community. Thank you.
James Livingston.
So a couple of things. I think my peach tree died. It's very sad. Fortunately, I have very helpful squirrels that have planted a forest full of pecan trees in my yard, so I think I'll be okay. But yeah, trees in parks, you know, trees that are food. Again, it'd be a nice thing to have. Let's see, the other thing, the bus system. So last month, I was in Canada, small town. And something interesting, they have a terminal and a spoke design, just like we do, but they have two different routes that go to the same place, except they take different streets. So people don't have to walk as far. So, and they normally, they run on a 30-minute schedule. So, now, they do charge for their bus rides, it's like $3. But you get, you know, from wherever you are, you go to, you know, you catch the bus, you go to the transit center, and you get the free transfer to wherever you're going, and then $3 to get back. So, they do charge for it, but it's a lot more convenient. Thanks.
Did any man leave? Tammy Boofers? Pamela Post?
Thank you all very much for all of the attention you have given us tonight, and I really appreciate it. On behalf of Oklahoma's for Responsible Transportation, we want to say thank you. We appreciate the support you have given us, and I hope that you all appreciate the support and the information that we have given you. We try to be honest about it, we have tried to be non-biased, we have tried to be fair about it. I think there's a lot more to come, and I appreciate your all's indulgence in working with us. Looking forward to seeing how this moratorium, not the moratorium, but the development of the ordinances goes. I think it is a great step forward for the city, and you'll do good. So, I'm here to say thank you on behalf of the people in our organization, and good night. You all still have miscellaneous comments? I'm sorry you all don't get to leave. I'm going home. Talk to you all later.
Tassie Hirschfield. Tassie. Jesse Matlock will follow Tassie.
Be very brief. I just have to follow Rob and preach a little bit of the gospel of democracy to you. The Oklahoma Turnpike Authority does not allow the public to speak at their meetings. They are insulated from public comment and from the public dislike of their projects. They are all appointees of the governor. With only one exception, after our law case, we have never been able to give them feedback. And this is important, because not only are they undemocratic, they're anti-democratic, and they do not trust the democratic process, and they look for other unelected people to do their work for them at the city and county level. And so I just, again, want to encourage all of you, as painful and tired as democracy makes you, it is so important, because autocracies frequently make terrible decisions that cost enormous amounts of money and lead to collapsed infrastructure. Corruption corrupts the engineering process, substandard materials enter supply chains, highways collapse. Think of Boeing, that's a good case study right now. And so again, as tedious as this process can be, thank you for respecting it, thank you for supporting it, and thank you for that vote before.
Jesse Matlock. Paul Wilson.
Paul Wilson, Ward one. I'm gonna flip the switch and go to a different route. We need to talk about Highway nine. Not only are we about to embark on a 400-and-something-day construction project, but it's starting at the height and the beginning of football season. Come on now. We already know what Highway nine's like during a home football game. You had construction, you think it's bad going south on I-35 with the construction down there at Riverwind, where it's backed up to Robinson? Good God. This can be backed up for hours. I understand it's part of ODOT, they're under the gun for doing this, but if you're gonna shut down that much, or have construction on that much of a major highway, why can't we ask them to do what they did with Porter, where they did it section at a time? And, or at least wait till after football season to start it? I mean, I get it, 400-and-something days, but by the next season, it'll be tail end. And on top of that, while they're improving it, why don't we start making it safer? Two weeks ago, I was actually in a rear-end collision on Highway nine. Luckily, the only thing that got damaged was my vehicle, and I could replace it. But that same day, when I went to the hospital, there was at least three other accident victims at the hospital from accidents on Highway nine, and we just had one this morning. I can't tell you how many times I open up Facebook, and on the Cleveland County scanner page, there's an accident somewhere on Highway nine every day. Obviously, it's a very big concern for everybody. Are we gonna have to wait till something happens, like what happened with Senator Treat, where somebody almost gets killed, or worse yet? I mean, we've had fatalities on that road. It, I'm tired of seeing stuff like this being reactive, we need to be more proactive. I mean, I've given suggestions on how we can improve safety on it, because like Council Member Holman once said, that the vast majority of it is people crossing over the median, going into oncoming traffic, and head-on collision. Well, if you look up and down most of the interstates in Oklahoma, you see cable barriers. They'll stop a semi. They're cheap, they're inexpensive, and they're easy to repair when something does happen. So I mean, there are suggestions out there, I've given a few to Council Member Holman, but I mean, if the state can come in and try and shut something down our throat, why don't we reverse it? We have a major...
Randy Carter. Did Randy Carter lead? Stephen Ellis.
Steve Ellis, Ward four. I want to echo something Rob Norman said tonight. We did have a watershed moment here, a watershed moment here, maybe two. The first was that Marcus Aurelius was repped from the dais, so ancient philosophy has its day in Norman. I thought I'd never looked to see it, that's great. Second point, though, and I think something that became clear in the discussion, is that sort of Norman citizens have grown weary of sacrificing their common good for the sake of a narrow set of moneyed interests, which is mostly what I want to call the sprawl lobby. We've started to listen to experts who push back against the rationalizations that lobby offers. So I do think that in the interest of deliberative democracy, which I think both Professor Hirschfield and Mr. Norman talked about, we need to learn to engage with some of these substantive issues, rather than just accept what we're being told by people who have some skin in the game. So I want to suggest that if anybody on the dais, or really anybody else, finds any of the sort of rationalizations offered by people like the OTA, or by house builders who want really cheap water capacity, so yes, I'm still on connection fees, or people who seek business subsidies, that you need to actually maybe consult some of the people who are offering criticisms of those kinds of things. So I want to echo Dr. Sorato's offer here. If you think a lot of, any of that stuff is a good idea, let's talk, I'll buy the coffee. Or you can ask some of the other people who are experts on this sort of thing, some of the people that my wife, Dr. Rogers, mentioned. But I do think it's important that we sort of not hide behind the, well, you know, this is what usually happens, this is how government usually gets done. As a fact of the matter, what usually happens is the people who are more powerful and the people who have more sway, oftentimes because of their wealth, usually exploit people who are less powerful and have less wealth and less sway. And there's no reason to be part of that. At a minimum, if you're worried that that might be one of the things that happens, be curious, ask a lot of questions, don't take things for granted. I wish I had my Aurelius here with me, because I'm reasonably sure he talked a lot about your sort of epistemic obligation to learn things. So take it from the ancient philosophers, and live the examined life, and think about what we're doing in a very serious way, rather than just accepting...
I believe Luigi Pavani left. Okay. Catherine O'Brien. Floyd Carroll.
I'm glad to be here today, because I'm in the right boat. I'm also voting for Larry Heckola, and I'd like him to put a sign in my yard so everybody can be sure of that. He's been stabbed so many times, I feel like he's my brother. And I've had my home stolen from me in 10 days, that, you know, I don't know how many people want to walk in my shoes and compete with that. And this young lady back here, and another great woman, Sean Lee, cried every day, for at least 30 days. That's how corrupt government can be. And also, I think I'm gonna run for Ward four counsel person over here, and it's not because they won't stand for the flag, because I support her with that, and I'm a veteran. And I'm sure that some of the people in my family that are veterans would support that. I don't like it that she don't show up for community meetings when we're having them, and I think that should be addressed. So, I have many complaints, and one thing about this OTA thing is I think that people are not looking outside of this box. I think that that turnpike is bigger than Norman. And, no, I don't think it, I'm sure of it. I knew about it in 2010, so some of these people are coming in late for the game. And somebody should probably look into that. If it's been going on that long, and you just now finding out about it, that's not too good. And since I know Chris, tell him if he waits until it shows up, he's retarded. He better get in the game and figure something out now. And the rest of those engineers. Thank you, sir.
Mark Campbell.
I wanted to talk to y'all tonight about the House rules and code of conduct over here. They say, keep each other informed, share information, verify information, treat people with respect, do not embarrass or attack, listen and understand before you judge, avoid stereotyping or characterizing. Share information, verify information. Unhoused persons' current survival conditions cannot be verified during city council meetings. Treat people with respect, do not embarrass or attack. This goes for the mayor, council, and citizenry regarding doxing the unhoused. To appeal from the dais, to search for and publish or broadcast identifying information, typically with malicious intent, is not only wrong, it is dangerous and may be illegal. Listen and understand before you judge. We have heard every base attack and oversimplifying of the unhoused complicated circumstances, reducing and judging people, dehumanizing them. Well, it's a primary self-dehumanization of the person's tossing bombs. Allowing a citizen, whether a homeowner or business owner, to lambast others because they are of differing physical, mental, or environmental circumstance, is inherently against House rules and code of conduct, and mostly occurs because the speakers cannot fathom the human condition is universal and applies to their own bad self. The House rules and code of conduct has not been held invalid or unconstitutional, nor would they be. These principles are above and beyond mayors, attorneys, city clerks, and city council. It is not a, well, I'm elected so me and my cohort can do whatever we please situation. It's astounding to witness the uncouth behavior from the dais, and by your silence allow it at the podium. To unfairly espouse that all people with a particular characteristic are the same, you wouldn't want the same thing done to you. You wouldn't allow them to be levied against you publicly every two weeks ad infinitum. As we saw tonight, point of order can be called, also known as raising a question of order. When it is called, the chair is asked to enforce the rules. It can be used at any time and takes precedence over other motions. It does not require recognition. Someone may interrupt the speaker to do it. Such as, for example, one council member could raise it, when another council member stereotypes and characterizes the public as expletives, or characterizes a human being as mentally ill, instead of the more mature person with mental illness, or person with suspected mental illness. It is very low behavior to speculate.
Chelsea Gravel.
I'm Chelsea Rochelle Gravel, Ward four. You've done a great job tonight, listening. It's too bad you don't do that all the time, on every topic that's presented to you. I want to share with you what Norman Neighbors does. We're a group of community members. We cover anything involving bringing awareness to the homeless in Norman using Facebook as our main media source. We take photos in public and allow photo documentation in the homeless crisis. The whole United States is facing this problem. We simply are documenting what that looks like for Norman. We just lived through a pandemic here, is another iconic time, and it's important to document what that means for Norman. Why do we take photos in public and allow the documentation of the homeless crisis? Well, like I said, the whole United States is facing this problem, so we simply document what that looks like. We have elected officials in our city government that are claiming there is no homeless crisis in Norman. Photo documentation of a homeless person has provided solace to a worried family about their homeless loved ones that they had no way of reaching out to. There is a very high number of homeless roaming our streets that have warrants for their arrest. In July alone, I counted 98 different individuals that were arrested multiple times, some of them arrested every couple of days. Photos also warn citizens where they may or may not go, where it's safe. But the difference in harassing and stalking versus what we are doing. Harassing refers to actions that make someone feel uncomfortable, threatened, humiliated, including verbal abuse, threatening gestures, and repeated contact. Stalking is more specific, and it includes following someone, showing up at their house or their workplace, using technology to track their movements and their activities. What we do is we shop, we live, we work, we play in downtown Norman. We are people that take pictures of everything we do, be that animals, plants, something cute in a store, and yes, the homeless we see when we are out and about. The photos of the homeless we share with you is a very small number of the total photos we take. What we don't do, we don't follow people, we don't incite violence, or encourage anyone else to do so. We do not put people down or spread hate in any form. Norman Neighbors has an investigative journalism team, and we hold those in power accountable, uncovering and exposing corruption, abuse of power, and other forms of wrongdoing. We delve into public record, we analyze and interpret data, and we craft compelling stories. We cover local media, news outlets, and national media. We have, cover your meetings whenever applicable, and we've confirmed with our NPD that we are doing nothing.
John Willard. I accidentally skipped him. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank y'all. Y'all may wonder why I would sit up here for four hours to get three minutes. But I just want to show y'all, y'all, this picture I took before the meeting. I've been trying to get a meeting with the mayor for over a year. I've been trying to get a meeting with the city manager for over a year. I've been trying to get a meeting with chief police for two years to discuss my issues. But I don't know the mayor, but he impressed me so much, and the one minute that I met with him before this meeting... him before this meeting that I'll vote for him for the rest of my life if he runs again. And I'll go all over this town showing that picture of that man, listening to me and hearing my problem. Right out there, I've been praying to God, don't ever think I'm alone. This, what I'm doing when I'm sitting here, there's 100 people praying for y'all right now. My church has 8,500 missionaries in the field. I am a licensed minister of the gospel that has bled blood because I choose to witness to the homeless. Some of y'all's members covered it up, and he helped me. He stopped them from prosecuting me, but that was an admission that they violated my right. They think that there's time... The attorney I was talking to before I came down here today advised me that we were gonna have some time issues about dates because it's been going on for two years, and we might be out of time. Yeah, look what you watch, but what we're gonna do is, my attorney's gonna pose as my friend because the police department has swore to me when they was laying on top of me and I was crying, begging them to stop hurting me, and they was ripping my arms out of socket and doing bustle intended damage. They're gonna get me good next time? Next time, one of the best civil rights attorneys in Oklahoma is gonna be posing as my friend, filming them, advising them of what they're doing to me wrong. And if y'all would use y'all's positions, I've been told, "Man, you know what it takes to settle my case? Tomorrow, a no-contact order on Norman Police Department, and I'll go away." That would be the best deal that I will ever offer y'all. When I sign on the dotted line, because my case, as their attorney knows, the one-year limit is... Next time, when I come in this up room, I sit here for four hours and telling y'all y'all can do something or not, but I'm telling you, next time, they say they're gonna get me good, what are you gonna do when I come in here with a broke back, broke neck, cast on both arms, or another tooth knocked out? And all you have to do is humble yourself and admit they're wrong and stop them, because next time...
Mr. Willard. Thank you.
Carlinde.
I'll be back next week, whoever it is. Y'all think about it, next time they're gonna get me good and you could stop them, all you gotta do is tell them, "No contact," because I would break the law. I haven't yet, and I never will.
Carlinde.
Carlinde Gravel, Ward 4. Council, mayor, city manager, and city attorney. I know who you are. I'm gonna shoot your ass. That's what I woke up to Sunday morning when I went out on my porch to drink my coffee. The homeless man lay across the street in the building at Longfellow to the ballpark, and that's what he was saying to me. Now, there's been a lot take place on social media if you haven't been there. Let me tell you a little bit about what has probably inspired this gentleman to say that. He's a regular in my neighborhood. He's got some problems. He's got some psychological problems or some drug problems. He's regularly seen beating people up who aren't there. He's got a puppy now. He was beating the shopping cart with a puppy in the front of it with a metal pole. Took a picture of it, of course, and posted on Norman Neighbors. You guys know we conduct things on Norman Neighbors to let people know. But yes, I called NPD. Yes, they came, and yes, I filed a third-party consent docket. It was just me and the person, so one person against another's word. But let me tell you a little bit about what's going on on Facebook. I know you think Facebook is not a big deal. Facebook has the ability, social media has the ability, to incite an insurrection. Social media is a very powerful tool when used in the wrong hands. So, as you guys know, I am in Ward 4. Helen Grant is my council member in Ward 4. There's a Ward 4 Facebook page with 3,500 members in which my council member is inciting others to incite violence. Okay? I'm gonna read some quotes off of Facebook. So I have been threatened on Facebook. I have, there's a couple of members on Facebook that are a part of a team of growing numbers, one of them being a Robert Mark Campbell, has stated that Chelsea's clothing at council is inviting her to be raped. So this is what's going on, simply because we are bringing awareness to the homeless crisis in Norman, simply because that. We are bringing articles, we are bringing news outlets, we are bringing information. So, we have also, we have a few other Facebook members that are being reached out to, and they are being told that me and Chelsea are mentally ill and being told how to get someone to do a welfare check on us, how to encourage others to do that to us, and also stating and giving others legal counsel on how to take documentation so that they can file a lawsuit against us, and maybe stating that...
Well, praise the Lord. Pass the biscuits. We have a lot of really smart citizens right here in this town. It's been evident this evening that, you know, we're not a bunch of dummies to be led by the nose, okay? And what I find fascinating is some people think that they can get by with things kind of under the table, behind smokescreens, behind fake profiles, you might say, okay? But there's something called metadata, all right? And the smart people in the citizenry know how to go deep dive into metadata. So if you think you're hiding behind fake shit, it's all gonna come flying back at you. Thank you.
Evan Dunn, Ward 7. I want to kind of flip the script a little bit and talk about some unifying elements in our world. Symbols, flags, ideas, philosophers' works. Jeez. Chemical elements. Everything around us, protons, neutrons, electrons. We call them different things. Uranium, neodymium, arsenic. But they're all just three things: protons, neutrons, and electrons. Everything we see, every one of us, everything around us, it's just those three things. That's a trinity. That's another trinity worth worshiping. I love what we're doing. I love the EV chargers out there. I love the solar parasol. It's a perfect example of carts being placed before the horse. By that, I mean, there's still uncovered soil out there. What are our priorities? Are we going to address these problems from the ground level, from the grassroots, by doing what Mayumi suggested and having more trees that can provide sustenance so that in times of, when supply chains break down, we aren't just left eating gruel? We have to seriously think about these pressures on businesses, on the environment, on economics, because if we don't, we're just, we're handicapping ourselves. We're handicapping future generations by wasting these resources. I've shown this before, haven't I? The graph on the benefits of fasting. I think that this needs to be known by everyone. Everyone needs to understand that from a metabolic health point of view, all you have to do is abstain. You carry glycogen in your liver. Whenever you abstain from calories, you go in and you start to pull out from the warehouse all of those sugars, and you break them down, and then you break down lipids. This is something that we've got to address, because how many of us are suffering from...
Time, Evan.
This is something that we can all do.
Counsel, we are adjourned.